Good morning, I'm gonna call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for September 19th. Rockhold.
Supervisor Boyce. Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Parks. Supervisor George.
Here. Please join me to pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the minutes of the meeting for the Board of Supervisors for September 12th. The pleasure of the board.
What?
Need a motion? Need a motion? Brian, are we ready?
No, not yet.
So you wanna verbal vote?
Um, no, it says motion approved and usually there's a box that shows up for the mover and the second.
Supervisor Bennett makes a motion, do we need a second? Okay, we second by?
I'll second it.
Long, all in favor? Okay, that is.
Oh, you can vote it now. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's approved. Thank you. Item five is the agenda review and considered approved by a majority vote.
Thank you Chair Zaragoza. Michael. Item six, moment of inspiration. Agenda page three has been revised to reflect Dr. Gary Allen Dickey, the United Methodist Church Retired Pastor. Item 24, CEO's Office Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of the 2017-20 MOA with VCPPOA Patrol Unit. A comment letter from the Civil Service Commission has been submitted. Item 26, Resource Management, Proposed Alternatives for Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulations in Coastal and Non-Coastal Zones. A revised board letter has been submitted. In addition, Agenda Page Six has been revised to reflect the subject in the revised board letter and a PowerPoint presentation has been submitted. Item 28, Supervisor Long, Approval of Advanced Startup Costs to Fillmore Empire of Groundwater Sustainability Agency Through Watershed Protection Zone Two, Request Removal From the Agenda. And finally, Item 30, CEO's Office, Authorization For Staff To Develop A Draft Master Residential Leasing Program For Homeless Persons. A Board Letter Has Been Submitted. And that's it.
Okay, thank you supervisors, any other concerns? I have, I wanna have some speakers for item seventeen for the consent.
I'll second.
Second. Please vote.
Five.
Okay.
Minutes.
Bennett.
Long.
Okay, please vote. Okay. And that's approved. Thank you then, we have movement of inspiration. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. This morning, it's my pleasure to introduce our bagpiper for the morning and this is Dr. Gary Allen Dickey. He just recently retired as Minister of the United Methodist Church of Westlake Village and he has played such a major part in our community. He has been so involved in so many different events and I have attended many of his speeches that he's given over the years, particularly in support for our veterans and he's one of those individuals who I've been quoted as saying, if I die first, I'd love for him to do my funeral. He is just a wonderful, a wonderful addition to our community and I know he'll continue to do something in his continuing volunteer efforts, but very respected and appreciated and I will turn it over to him for a little bit of entertainment, I see.
Welcome Pastor.
Wow.
I see his wife Tammy's here.
Welcome Pastor and your wife too.
Is that a first for the Board of Supervisors?
It's a first for me.
Okay, very good. Thank you for an opportunity to give a moment of inspiration. I wanted to share with this story about a piper who was asked to pipe for a brief graveside service, but it was at a cemetery that he was not familiar with. And not being familiar with it, he was going through the rows and got lost and being a man, he pulled over to ask for directions. Not. He arrived late for the funeral. As he entered the cemetery gates, he saw the backhoe and the crew was getting ready to fill up the hole. He just felt absolutely bad about this, the crew were eating their lunch and he came up to them and he apologized to the workers for his tiredness and missing what he was supposed to be there for, but he said that he was going to not hold them up for long, but he needed to do what he needed to do. And so he's, as the workers gathered around him, he played out his heart and soul, every tune that he knew for a funeral. He was playing "Near My God To Thee," "Going Home," "Abide With Me" and he concluded with "Amazing Grace." And as he was going back to his car, he opens the door and as he puts his coat in, he overhears one of the workers saying to another one, he said, "Lord Almighty, I have seen nothing like that before in all of my life and I've been putting septic tanks in for 20 years."
Wrongly.
It happens. It's called grace when you get forgiven for something that you did and you don't deserve it. How many of you know what the number one ask for tune on the bagpipes could possibly be? Amazing Grace.
Amazing Grace.
Exactly. Number one. And it's a wonderful tune. I've been to Scotland many times. Last year, my wife and I again attended the Royal Military Tattoo in Edinburgh. Now, the tattoo in Edinburgh is not a full-length colored picture of the Queen on your shoulder that says "God Save The Queen." It's a military band, and many bands, that gather together with music and pageantry on the esplanade at Edinburgh Castle with this wonderful opportunity to listen to the music. But the one part that everybody enjoys listening to is at the close of the service, there's about 200 bagpipers all together playing "Amazing Grace" as they go out. It stirs the soul. If you've been to Scotland, you know it can be a little bit dreary. Scottish weather is usually overcast, it can be raining, but there's always a little bit of grace in every countryside village in Scotland and that is the flower boxes that you see here and there, brightening up the front of a house, the beautiful gardens that they have. So in the midst of all the grayness of all the houses built, the stone that are so gray, here are these little signs of grace popping out and you see the colors and they're really brightening your soul. As we gather together here today, that's what I hope that all of us continue to do in our lives, in this very crazy gray world in which we live. May it be an opportunity for each one of us to be a spark of color, a place in the midst of the showers and the darkness and the gray clouds to bring a little bit of grace. And I know that as Board of Supervisors, you're doing that all the time, for all of the people gathered together here today, you have a place in doing that too. Bring a spot of grace, it makes a difference, it changes the world, changes our community. And I've discovered in life that grace is mandatory, bagpipes are optional.
Thank you.
May grace abound. God bless y'all.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you so much for what you've done for our community too. I'm inspired.
Very, very good. Thank you, thank you Pastor. Okay, our next item is the consent item, item seven, 11 through 19. And it's a pleasure of the board, I have some speaker cards on item 17, would you like to hear that first? Okay, we have item 17, I have three speakers and the first person is Tina Abe, then followed by Michael Rockhold and Deanna Presley.
Good morning, my name is Tina Abe and I am speaking in support of the Watershed Protection District project at Coyote Creek. I really appreciate the time to speak this morning with you. My husband and I have lived there since October of 2014. We have four children, two in college, one in high school, one in middle school. And we love our neighborhood. It's not a wealthy one, we have families, we have elderly, we have empty nesters, we have all kinds of ages living there and people have dug deep to come up with what we can of the matching funds as well. My property directly adjoins the bed of Coyote Creek, so we're very interested in the creek bed being in good shape. Between the four drivers in our household, we make four to five round trips out of our neighborhood each day and with the creek blocking our road, we had to go up, I don't know if you're familiar with the road, we had to go up and down Sky High Road. It was a real challenge and very difficult for our family this past year. So we really appreciate having a clear crossing. This past winter and spring, with the crossing covered by water, two of my children did assist with the clearing out, but that's not enough, we do need the heavy equipment to come in there and do that. And we really feel it's a matter of safety. This last spring, there was a trash truck broken down for a time and we were not only blocked by the water, but we couldn't even go up the treacherous Sky High Road. And my husband missed work that morning, my daughter missed some classes at the university and that, they were inconveniences, but really, I was looking at it as a matter of safety and had there been an emergency with our family or one of the many families on our street and it could have really been tragic if an ambulance can't get in there. And so it's really, for us, it's a matter of safety, that was a minor inconvenience, but really, we need this project done. We're really thankful for the plan to allocate 150,000 plus for the Coyote Creek debris removal project and really urge you to approve that unanimously today. We appreciate the generous grant from the USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service and as a neighborhood, hope that our contribution of almost $21,000 demonstrates our willingness to partner with the county as well. Thank you.
Thank you Tina. Our next speaker is Michael Rockhold, followed by Deanna.
Hello Board of Members, my name is Michael Rockhold. I've been a resident of Foster Park for pretty much all my life, with the exception of about four years when I served in the US Navy, where I get to go pretty much around the world a couple of times and saw a lot of places. I always came back to Ventura, Ventura's always been my home. In the past, we've had many issues with the Coyote Creek crossing with mud and water flow coming off of Red Mountain and we're getting stuck. During the 2005 floods, we had a lot of water flow coming down off of Red Mountain and overflowing the drainage canal, crossing Casitas Vista Road and pretty much damming up the creek again. And well, the same thing happened again in 2017 in February, where we got like nine and a half inches of rain in one day and I think OHI said they got seven and a half or something like that. This last year, I was given permission to go down with a hand shovel, so there was three of us, we went down there, I've made about eight trips down there. One of the trips was with Steve Bennett and I thank him very, very much for helping, it was a lot of fun, not really. But I love this little community of Foster Park, it's like my home, it's always been my home. I was basically born there and actually, I got to go to school at Mill School Elementary, which turned into Brooks Institute, now it's up for sale or something like that. My primary route in and out of this community is the crossing and by keeping this crossing open, it is not just convenience, it's about safety in the event of an emergency and it's imperative that we keep this route open for possible evacuations in case there's a big emergency, that Sky High Road is like a narrow one-lane road and only one person can use it at a time. There's many times people don't understand the rules of the road where if you're going downhill, you have to give the right of the way to the people going uphill and they'll just sit there and watch you for a while and we ended up having stand downs and that doesn't work because you can't back down the hill, it's against the law. So anyways, thank you very much Members for letting me speak and I sure hope we can get a 5-0 vote on this project to get it going.
Thank you Michael.
Thank you very much.
We've got four of us today, but it might be 4-0, who knows? Deanna Presley.
Good morning, I always get really nervous when I speak.
Take your time.
I'm here as a citizen of the area, Camp, I live on Camp Chaffee Road, my name is Deanna Presley, 7884 Camp Chaffee Road. And I want to speak more to the finances behind this. I realize that this is a huge obligation for the county and I appreciate every bit of financing that's provided for this. A commitment to sound budgeting begins with each and every citizen's budget. Asking local citizens to offer funds from their personal resources to repair a county obligation goes beyond fair taxation. As retired elementary teacher, my budget does not provide for excessive taxation, be it legal or otherwise. I recently moved to Ventura County to be close to my family, a family that is already burdened by medical costs for a hearing defect of their only son. My daughter was going to try to come today, she had to drop her son off at preschool and then get to work, so she's on a very busy schedule. It's not just my family who has this type of burden, every single family in this lovely, in that lovely valley has their own story to tell. Personally, I do not want to see our local families burdened by this taxation conveniently called donations. It might help the county maintain its annual budget, but I am strongly concerned what it will do to the budgets of local families. I respectfully ask this board to seek every option available in order to maintain a healthy economy for individual residents rather than seeking donations to cure a known public obligation on a public road. We must pass this measure for safety issues to have this work done and also for the betterment of Ventura County as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you Deanna. Supervisor.
Thank you Supervisor Zaragoza. I want to thank the residents. We've said it many times in this boardroom, but government works best when it helps people help themselves and this community has been remarkable in terms of coming together. This is a unique situation and I won't go into all of the details in terms of what causes this unique situation, but for Tina's sons and for Mike to go in there with hand shovels and open up this drainage so that the water would drop down enough that people would be able to get through, for the community to come together and raise funds for, you know, for the match, it's just remarkable and so I just would really ask the board to be strongly supportive of this in terms of it going forward. And there've been, it's, I, you fall in love with a community when you go out and start working with the residents and stuff and we've spent a fair amount of time out there and it's, as Tina said, it's a community that is pushing the envelope to be able to make this happen and so it's very appropriate for us now to step forward and do our share in this part of the process and the county's in-kind contribution's already over $80,000 in terms of this and everybody is, I think, playing their appropriate role here at this point in time. So I'd like to move the recommended, I'd like to move the whole consent calendar.
Okay, and I think one of the things that's important too supervisors, and it was shared by the speakers, is a matter of safety and I think that's paramount, you know, so thank you for sharing.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Please vote. And this is for the entire, 11 through 19.
Right.
Yep, 11 through 19.
Okay.
The funds on the Coyote Creek come from the Watershed Protection District Zone One, correct?
Right.
It's mostly the NRCS grant that.
As far as the county's contribution is coming from the county's Watershed Protection District.
Right. Jeff says yes.
That's an appropriate source.
Okay, that's approved, thank you for sharing today. Okay. Our next item is public comments and public comments, I have quite a few speakers, so I'm gonna share with you that it's three minutes for a speaker today and you don't have to use all your three minutes, but if you want to, we got three minutes. So we'll start off with, we still have Kim, Kim Bayon, Kim followed by Janice Love. Got three minutes, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? Great. I'm a little nervous speaking, but thank you so much for giving me the opportunity. This is for Supervisor Parks regarding the Indivisible Canal General Meeting in Thousand Oaks on September 10th, 2017. It was a pleasure listening to you speak and I want to thank you briefly for meeting with SEIU members. The meeting was very inspiring and I congratulate you on your accomplishments thus far during your political career. My take on the meeting was unity. Regardless of our political stance, we need to come together, support each other and work as one for the common good of the people. There seems to be one thing which unites all of us and that is a better quality of life, which is a humanity issue. I am part of the Ventura County Bargaining Team for IHSS and it is my hope with the continuing meetings and negotiations with the Board of Supervisors, we can use the same train of thought. Regardless of our differences, we all want a better quality of life. This is what we are striving for within our negotiations. The county has accused us of not bargaining in good faith after we brought proposals to the table. Our bargaining is for a better quality of life for both IHSS recipients and caregivers alike. My team and I would love to be able to put our differences aside while trying to work on our contract. At this time, I would like to mention some important improvements SEIU 2015 made in the state budget. Number one, maintenance of effort. Under the maintenance of effort formula, the county is not responsible for any costs associated with caseload growth, wage increases due to the state of, due to the state or federal minimum wage or any other costs not negotiated by the county. For new costs negotiated by the county, the federal government pays 54%, the state pays 29.8% while the county pays 16.2%. Number two, state cap on wages and benefits raised. Once the state minimum reaches $11 per hour, the state cap on IHSS provider wages and benefits will be revised to $1.10 above the California minimum wage, effectively reducing the cost to counties and allowing an opportunity to negotiate for higher wage increases. An example of that would be on January 1st, 2019, the minimum wage would $12 and the IHSS cap will be $13.10. This allows the state to negotiate, I'm sorry, to contribute to a higher rate which could potentially result in wage increases in contracts negotiated with counties. For counties where IHSS wages and benefits are at or above $12.10 currently or any future state cap, the state will share the cost of to 10% wage and benefits increase over three years. And number three, in 2016, SEIU determined that the welfare and institutions code did not prohibit a county from making an agreement with a union to establish a wage supplement that would float above minimum wage.
Kim, thank you Kim.
Thank you so much, very much. Thank you so very much. Have a beautiful day, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Janice Love followed by Monica Gray. Good morning.
My name is Janice Love, I live in Oxnard. I've been doing in-home care for at least 20 years and love my job. I have two consumers, both are not family. One consumer has dementia, she doesn't want to eat, doesn't want to take her pills. And my other consumer has an autoimmune disease, he's very weak and diabetic. Some of the tasks I do is I cook, I go to the store, go to the pharmacy, I clean, I make sure they take their medication when they're supposed to. I have to make really tough decisions, do I buy groceries or do I pay rent or pay my car payment? Gas is going up again, so I buy less groceries since I need gas to get to work. Also, I think there are some essentials that we need such as gloves. I know many providers, you know, buy their own gloves and it's expensive. Nurses are provided gloves, why can't we get gloves as home care workers? Basically, we just need more to survive. Thank you.
Okay, Monica Gray followed by Lamont Pearson. Monica Gray.
Good morning Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Chair Zaragoza. I'd also like to say hi to everyone here from the in-home support services community because that's not an easy job and something as simple as gloves would probably make life a lot easier for them too, so my heart goes out to them. I wanted to talk today about Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. As you know, I am and always will be a cannabis advocate and activist and I want to highlight for everyone the patent number that the US government holds on cannabis as medicine, Google it, 663-0507. That proves it has medical benefit, they just have to figure out how to monetize it and capitalize on it. But I'm here to talk about a couple brave kids. I want to talk about Landon Riddle, he's a pediatric cancer patient, he's currently residing in Northern California. He and his family started out in Colorado and, you know, you think Colorado, freewheeling, there's a shop on every corner. The same rules will still apply as far as safe access to patients and their families, including when there are minor children involved. During the county's meetings on safe access, I kept hearing, "What about the children? What if the kids get a hold of it?" Sometimes it's medically appropriate, including when they're facing cancer. Do any of you know any kids going through cancer treatment right now? It's tough. My son is a patient at the Pediatric Diagnostic Center, which also is on the same floor as the oncology part and it breaks my heart because none of those families are ever provided information on safer, less toxic alternatives, including medical cannabis. So I'm here today to let everyone know of a resource that is not in our county, it's called From The Earth Resource Center, it's in Santa Ana and it's run by a beautiful woman named Miko Perez. She's a lawyer, she also has a son who has special needs and she helps patients and families and caregivers get the information that they need on the safest forms of medicine available and at the end of the day, everyone wants to be focused on harm reduction. You know, everyone has the right to choose the medical treatments that they see fit, you know, Constitution Week, yay, that should be one of the basics. Right now, there's an 11-year-old girl that's suing the pants off Jeff Sessions and I couldn't be happier, Alexis Bortel, and she's actually making a lot of strides in it, so check out on Instagram, Team Landon and Cannabis and at Alexis Bortel. You know, that's what happens when kids stand up for themselves and families stand up for themselves and, you know, ask for the information that you need and take it and spread the word, so thank you for your time.
Thank you Monica. Okay, we have Lamont Pearson followed by Nancy Borchard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lamont Pearson, I'm a citizen of Ventura County.
as the oncology part, and it breaks my heart, because none of those families are ever provided information on safer, less toxic alternatives, including medical cannabis. So I'm here today to let everyone know of a resource that is not in our county. It's called From the Earth Resource Center. It's in Santa Ana, and it's run by a beautiful woman named Miko Perez. She's a lawyer. She also has a son who has special needs, and she helps patients and families and caregivers get the information that they need on the safest forms of medicine available. And at the end of the day, everyone wants to be focused on harm reduction. You know, everyone has the right to choose the medical treatments that they see fit, you know. Constitution Week, yay, that should be one of the basics. Right now, there's an eleven-year-old girl that's suing the pants off Jeff Sessions, and I couldn't be happier. Alexis Bortel. And she's actually making a lot of strides in it. So check out on Instagram, Team Landon and Cannabis, and at Alexis Bortel. You know, that's what happens when kids stand up for themselves and families stand up for themselves and, you know, ask for the information that you need and take it and spread the word. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, we have Lamont Pearson, followed by Nancy Borchard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lamont Pearson. I'm a citizen of Ventura County. I have several addresses, thirteen hundred Joliet, Oxnard, California. I also have eighty East Hillcrest, number one oh one, Thousand Oaks, California, nine one three six zero. And I'm also at twenty-four forty-eight Gay House Lane, Simi Valley, California. Basically, most of my life resides in District five, two, and four, and that's a continuous basis, okay? So with that said, there's a lot of atrocities that have been done to me. I was falsely arrested last year, and I was denied my medication. I'm a Medicare, Medhi-Medhi recipient, and I was denied my medication while I was under doctor's care, and I was in police custody. They also did not provide me with shoes at that time. And I made a request for a restraining order against the person that was trying to falsely accuse me for felony charges, and that order was denied by Judge Derek Millen, okay? And if he had provided, if he had allowed a restraining order to be in place, then maybe the person that was trying to accuse me wouldn't have been in position to come to my address in Simi Valley and key up my car and key up my girlfriend's car and threaten me in the middle of the night, okay? Essentially, I've gone through one hell of an ordeal, and it was a big mistake, okay? I never should have been arrested. I told the police the very first time that I was interviewed by Kelly, his name is Kelly Rourke, he's a police detective with Thousand Oaks Sheriff's Office, and in his interrogation interview, he lied to try to, I don't know what, but I told him the truth in that interview. And instead of being treated like a citizen, an upright, standing citizen, last July, I was in the very courtrooms in Ventura County, serving as a juror on a jury. And two months later, I'm getting prosecuted for something that I didn't do. I was thrown in a dungeon, okay? I was done wrong, and now nobody wants to acknowledge it. At the same time, my medications were kept for me. I was not allowed to see my doctor, Dr. Gordon, okay? I wasn't allowed to see him. March thirtieth, Tracy Kahn, who is the director of the medical facility in Thousand Oaks, called me on my phone and told me that I can no longer see my doctor, and I was kept from my medications. And now, everybody wants to not acknowledge that as such.
Lamont, thank you for sharing. I'm sure that staff is listening to your concerns, but your time's up, and I want to thank you for sharing, you know, and I'm sure that staff's listening to that.
Yes, thank you, Chair Zaragoza. We will look into this. Mr. Pearson, thank you.
Please, and you know what? We have all the time in the world, because when you're back in session, I will come back three minutes at a time to explain all of this. There's so much to explain here, and you guys need to know, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Lamont.
Thank you.
All right. We have Nancy Borchard, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Nancy Borchard. I live at twenty-eight hundred Burlwood Road in Somus, and I'm here today to encourage you to move forward with the proposal that Mike Powers and his staff have figured out, a new approach to try to address our homeless situation. I serve on the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and I'm very aware of how much need there is for housing at every level. And at any, this is an innovative approach, and I think that's one of the things we have to do. We all know how difficult it is to find property, and then even if you find it, nobody wants you to build anything there that would house people who have all kinds of problems. So we have desperate need, and I encourage you to try this approach. It might be something really that we can grow and do just one is the start, and that's a good palette, but then hopefully we can use that. And other people will see that that's a possibility and maybe step up. I think we need to engage our whole community to act. We can't just rely on government to do particularly housing, you know, that's a tough thing. Certain kind of housing, pretty much government has to do, but just housing is a very basic need, and I encourage you to vote in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Suzanne Duckett.
Oh, good morning. My name is Suzanne Duckett, and I live in Thousand Oaks. After watching the news, the Texas news and the Florida news, I finally decided to do something about the earthquake that's coming. I'm here today to ask you to use your new-founded tax dollars from marijuana to use for the devastation and the preparedness that you need for the devastation that you're all going to be responsible to do and to make sure that we're all gathered together in I just think that the marijuana tax dollar will help you fund possibly a new county booklet that goes to the other resources of the cities that have put together their books and put together a book that has pages that people can actually use as a reference and make notes in. You might also want to make these books in Spanish as well as English. The next thing I'm here to ask you to do is to notify all of the gas stations so that they can buy their own generators or buy the solar panels that put the energy into their own batteries. Because I don't want people storing gas in their houses in their yards. We need everybody to be able to go to gas stations. So I would like you to ask, I don't think you can require, but I want you to notify every gas station that this needs to be done. And it's actually, it works for them. They're not going to lose out on a lot of money because they can't fill gas tanks during this time when probably the electricity's going to go down. So I'm here today to ask you to do the dollars from tax dollars from marijuana, to put it together so that people are aware of the earthquake that's coming. If they know that that's where the tax dollars are going, they're going to get on the ball. And you'll be doing a real good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Duckett, thank you for coming all the way from Thousand Oaks here this morning. We do have a Office of Emergency Services through our Sheriff's Department. I know our chair serves as our disaster coordinator on that board, too. And these are good recommendations to bring to them. And we did do a little research, because you mentioned the idea of having generators at gas stations so the pumps don't shut off, right, when there's no electricity?
Correct.
And we heard that Florida actually does do that in some of theirs. So that's probably a good thing also to ask our state legislators about as they look more at what they can do for earthquake and other types of disaster preparedness. Also, I just want to point out, there is no, that I know of, any marijuana tax coming to our county, but there are obviously other sources. But looking to the state, I think there's some good options, and we could also get you more information about what we do provide to the public. And we certainly do have in Spanish literature on disaster preparedness. I don't know if that particular one, but I can look into that. And also, just, we will get in touch with you with our emergency services individual. Kevin McCowen has a lot of good information that he can share with you, and you can provide input to him. But thank you for coming down.
Well, good, thank you.
And I want to thank you for, we do at EOC, you know, we are talking about the earthquake preparedness, and we have all the police chiefs in the entire ten cities in the county that belong to the EOC, and definitely...
I know all those guys are on board, but we, the public, I mean, I went to a speaker program that Linda Parks put together, and she had the Caltech seismologists come and say, "You better, guys better get on the ball, because, you know, you don't have to get out of town." And I did nothing.
Yes. But I'm going to share that information with the EOC. I think it's important that we convey that to the public, you know, in Spanish and English.
And the fairgrounds might be a perfect place to put in your booklet for a shelter. When all the fences fall down, what's going to happen to all people's animals?
Yeah, it's going to be catastrophic, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
And we do definitely have places already designated for animals. And I just, since you're here, I just thank you also for your service on the AIDS Advisory Board.
Thank you. Okay, then our next item is board comments. Supervisor Parks.
Yeah. Just an active week, but I think probably the most memorable part of our week was the working together with county staff and volunteering a Day of Caring, and we went to the Turning Point River Haven Project, which is a facility, dome living for homeless individuals, and it is, it was nice to be out there. I haven't been there before. And we planted a garden, and it just, hopefully it will get watered, and they will have nice, wonderful, fresh vegetables. But it's such a great thing that United Way does do. Gives a lot of opportunities for people to volunteer, get out in their community, and do things. Also attended the Senior Concerns Ultimate Dining Experience, and really how special it is to have senior concerns in the Caneo Valley. It provides respite care for, for example, spouses of people with Alzheimer's, and a facility that people really enjoy. For a day, they could come drop off their loved one and finally get out and do shopping and things they need. So a great, great organization, nice to see them raising money. Also got to attend a Los Padres Forest Watch event, and didn't realize that the Los Padres Forest goes all the way to Big Sur, is one of the largest forests in the state of California, and it, I think, represents almost two-thirds of the county of Ventura is in the Los Padres Forest. And seeing how, as we had heard before with a presentation at our board, how the condor does best in the sespe, which is part of the Los Padres Forest. And that's pretty nice to see that we have been pretty good stewards, as best as we try here at the Board of Supervisors to keep those species going and seeing them start to come back again. I think that concludes my comments, and I have no adjourned memories. Thank you.
Excellent. Supervisor Bennett, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn a memory of the people of this list, and the number of things this weekend, but the most significant was spending time out at Camp Chaffee Road, working with those residents to try to make sure we're ready for this project, that appreciate the board's support for. I do want to point out that just weekly, I keep finding myself appalled at the things that are happening in this country that facilitate this opioid crisis that we have. And just the one that I learned this week is that the insurance companies pay for the addicted opioid drugs, but they don't pay for painkillers that are not addictive. And, you know, just that little fact right there is one more thing that contributes to it. But what we've done in terms of allowing the drug countries, the drug companies to over-push these is really devastating this country. It's hollowing out the country in a lot of places where people are really being, communities are being severely affected by this opioid crisis, including here in Ventura County, a number of places. I'm happy to see that our deaths are down, and I think it's because of the proactive work that we have in terms of getting the antidote out there, but it's not, not based on evidence that there's less of a crisis, just we're better at keeping people from dying when they go into an overdose. So it's one that I think we have to constantly keep on the radar screen and try to do everything we can to address. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Long.
It's one of the things Supervisor Long and I will have the water hearing next week, and so if people know anybody who's interested in those, this water topic, I encourage them to come out to our board meeting next Monday at one thirty. Thank you.
Next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Okay. Well, I want to comment on the opioid epidemic. There was a great article on the California County's News in regards to actually mapping by county how many prescriptions are prescribed per thousand. And Northern California is having a horrible time in comparison to Southern California. But I do agree that it's not that we're not having the problem. We might be doing better at educating and saving those people who have that type of thing happen to them. So I just think we definitely need to keep that on top of it. In regards to our veterans, I went to the Military Collaborative Meeting, and we talked about the CTI training that our officers are receiving. We talked about homelessness with Santa Barbara and the importance of having boots on the ground, and wanted to make sure that we don't forget about that. So having boots on the ground on a Friday, just to make sure that we're providing services along with to go in, because as we all know, not many come to our office, but when we go out, we learn a lot more. And so I really appreciated our Sheriff's Department valuing that and making sure that that happens. And also, the room was packed, and the amount of people focused on our veterans is extraordinary, and I just want to applaud them on it. We did go to the VCCCD, Community College, grand opening in Camarillo, and that was wonderful. It is a hub of their administrative office, and I know we're in discussion as to how we can grow our Santa Paula College. And we have great things going on in our Oxnard and Ventura, but to make sure that it is, great education is going on throughout Ventura County is a huge focus for us. Also on Food Share, congratulations to Jewel Petty, ninetieth birthday visionary and founder of Food Share. It was a fabulous event, great venue, and really great people in our county. A lot of work is discussed at those items as well, and I think we work more than we play around here, but it's all good. Also, I took my family to the POW MIA recognition that was on Friday here, and it was wonderful to see all ages be a part of it and remember what it was about. We had many students, and those that are serving, say the names of those who've passed away, and then go around and discuss the table and the whole symbolism of the flag and so forth. And I think that's very important for us to remember. Many of us just drive from our house to our work and back and don't need anything else, and we need to look outside and see what's going on. Also, if anyone goes to a presentation on Kimberly Kelly, she did an amazing workshop on Alzheimer's, and she'll be emailing it. We have a lot of our search and rescue that are attending, and then our community members. This was held in Santa Paula. With the growth of dementia and Alzheimer's in our county, it's imperable that we understand what happens if they walk out the house. And with phones, they're so much more mobile, and what do we need to do to watch out for? So that was very good. And then also, I want to congratulate this county of Ventura. We received several awards in regards to the League of California Cities, the CSAC, and the Statewide Energy Efficiency Collaborative. We've received the Gold Level Award for twelve percent agency greenhouse gas reduction. And we also received an award for the Platinum Level Award in Sustainability Best Practices. So I wanted to thank everyone who put that together, our departments with energy. It takes a lot to create those savings, and I just appreciate that. Also, our legislation is hot items on the state and the federal level. Our AB twelve fifty, which I know Mr. Powers will be talking about, has been stopped, so that's great. He'll go into that. I wanted to touch base on the repeal for SB one. We had talked about that initially, and there will be a group coming forward for our ballot in two thousand and eighteen. And then on the federal level, we have HR sixteen twenty-eight, which is the ACA repeal. They're working on pushing that through, and they've got to have votes by September thirtieth and so forth. There's more, and I'm sure... There's more and I'm sure hopefully you've gotten that information, but I think it's important that we look on our legislation because that is the funding and the policies that are put in place that we all work with. So we have to understand it. And then I adjourn in memory of those on the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor.
Can I tag on to that? First, just really laud Supervisor Long. You have just dived into your role as supervisor full in and just really appreciate the breadth of information that you're educating yourself and educating us with. So thank you for that. And you did mention the crisis intervention training that we do with our Sheriff's Department and it reminded me of a really tragic incident at Georgia Tech, right, with a 21-year-old student that was shot by campus officers, someone who has had mental issues and looking at what we have done in our county, because this was something that was occurring more than it should have been back in the early 2000s. And because we have trained our officers and looking at trying to get them all trained and I think we're up to something like 80% now of our sworn deputies have been trained, really that and the combination of using tasers has really pretty much solved our problem. And I'm hoping that other cities and counties and college districts all do this kind of crisis intervention training because it just is a really tragic incident. And I know it galvanizes the community together to see that we can do better and hopefully they will too.
Thank you for sharing. I had a busy weekend too. You know, I attended the Mexican consulate Fiesta Celebration. You know, this is, the 16th of September was the Independence of Mexico from Spain. It's similar to our Fourth of July here in the United States. And also that, on that Friday, that evening, I went over to Plaza Park where they had the Cry of Independence. And that was, there must have been four or 5,000 people there at Plaza Park, you know, sharing that information. Additionally, I also attended the Fiesta de las Paradas Parade with my wife and along with many other dignitaries and elected officials. There must have been 10,000 people out there on C Street. Just a fantastic weekend. Radio Lazar is one of the biggest Spanish-speaking radio stations. They did an excellent job advertising that parade and also the festivities and like I said, there was probably more like maybe 10,000, 15,000 people out there just celebrating. It was good bringing the community together and again, the whole thing's the Cry of Independence, which is, I think, extremely important. And I had numerous other items, but I'll just stop there and adjourn in memory of those folks on this list. Michael?
Thank you Chair Zaragoza, Board members. Supervisor Long mentioned a huge relief on AB 1250. I appreciate your Board's support, Supervisor Long being so active in Sacramento, our legislative leadership. Bottom line is the bill was held in the Senate Rules Committee and did not move any further and the legislative session ended late. I was going to say Friday night was really more like Saturday morning. So, but that was a nonstop challenge until the end, I would say, and so important. I mean, we don't talk about, we talk about legislation here, but not as much attention as to this bill because of its potential devastating impact on so many of the critical services your county provides to those in need in our community. So more work to be done. It's a two-year bill, so we have a lot of work to do this next coming year, but that will give us more time to further describe to all involved the importance of the public-private partnerships we have and the balance that we strike in providing those services. And I really do want to thank also, there was a lot of information. This was data-driven advocacy. It wasn't just, we don't like it, here's a nice story. It was, here's a lot of data about all the services that we provide, here's the number of contracts, here's the dollar impact, here's the business impact. And that takes a ton of work that had to be done very quickly. And I really want to appreciate Catherine Rodriguez and her fiscal team, Matt Carroll, Sue, HCA, HSA, Barry, the sheriff, IT, Mike and his team. We put together a lot of data in a short amount of time to give our legislative leaders the information they needed to advocate on our behalf. So thank you and definitely a good result so far and more work ahead. So a couple other items, I wanted to just mention that I had the pleasure of attending the Chicano Art Exhibit Reception at the Ventura Museum Friday night, along with our community liaison, Rosa Gonzalez. And it was very well attended. I mean, it was neat to see the museum really in full action with great tenants, great exhibits, great energy. So it was just, it was a wonderful evening and congratulations to all who put it on. Also want to remind folks, just a reminder that the memorial ceremony for fire engineer Ryan Oster will be September 21st. The public unveiling to begin at 1:00 PM at Fire Station 42 on High Street in Moore Park. Also upcoming will be the Housing Trust Fund Event this Thursday, the 21st. Also, this is things that just sort of happen normally and I want to just touch on one just for a second, which is discrimination training. And so of course, there's a requirement that we do it and we do it, but we also want to do it right and well. And I had the pleasure of attending one of the sessions last week put on by our Training Department, in particular Sheila Norman. And she just did a great job of bringing the issues to life in a really compelling way. And so I want to thank Sheila and the Training Department and just encourage all of you. You can do it online too and I know you're meeting requirements, but if you get a chance to see it live and in person, it's very compelling and well done. And lastly, I would just say, I appreciated yesterday being able to visit the location out with Supervisor Parks and the growing grounds out near the rain shelter. It was really neat to see it up close and great possibilities there. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next item is item 27, written. And that's a recommendation Supervisor Parks.
Yes, our, one of our MAC members, Janice Gardner, moved out of the Santa Rosa Valley and so it left an opening. And while she's still in Ventura County, serving on our Behavioral Health Board and elsewhere, we do have an opening and we interviewed, I interviewed for the positions and I'm recommending the appointment of Philip Ochoa. Really good folks there that I interviewed. It was a tough decision. I know Philip will do a great job and would ask that you support my nomination.
Okay.
So you'll be making the motion?
A second then?
Second by Bennett? Oh, Kelly, okay.
No, the motion is by Mrs. Parks.
Is your motion?
It works for me.
Okay, either way.
Either way, he gets appointed.
Okay. And that is approved. Okay, thank you. And item 28 is in pool?
Yes.
Okay, so we go item 29 and this is a recommendation Supervisor Parks and Zaragoza for the Board of Supervisors to support legislative enactment, HR 3682, Blue Whales and Blue Skies Act.
Sure. We all sit on the Air Pollution Control Board, so we're familiar with our program that we've partnered with this county of Santa Barbara with, which is to incentivize the ships out in the channel to lower their speeds so that, one, which is the primary emphasis of the Air Pollution Board, that would reduce the amount of NOx, nitrogen oxides, in the atmosphere which contribute to ozone. And it has a significant benefit when they do lower their speeds. You don't see it, but you generally don't see all those ships out there, but they are significant enough that in Santa Barbara County, it contributes to 50% of all their NOx, nitrogen oxides. In Ventura County, it's about 25%. So reducing that will help us to clean our air. And it also has the wonderful effect also of reducing the amount of wells, like blue wells, gray wells, humpback wells and such, from getting hit by the ships. So this is a collaborative effort with the environmental community, you know, trying to protect our marine life as well as air quality. And Congressman Lowenthal has a bill out there to incentivize it with public, good, positive public relations for the marine companies that do participate. And so Supervisor Zaragoza, I believe.
I just want to share, and I was, you know, part of that, in 2016, we traveled to Washington, DC to receive an award accommodation by APCD for helping save the whales and so forth. And additionally, we, one of the things, the NOx emissions was something like 500 metric tons that were actually kept from emitting to the air. And also we, the VSR program has been extended for a lot of the ships are now participating. And they're getting the logo and I can't remember the name of the logo that they're going to get. And it's almost of a pride thing that they put on their stacks, saying that they're participating in that program to save the whales and also to help with our emissions, you know. And again, Mike Diego, some APCDs doing a great job, you know, whether it's working with Santa Barbara, County Santa Barbara and the county of Ventura. So I think it's an excellent program and Congressman Ellen Lowenthal has really been pushing that considerably in Lobbeats and that area. So I think it's a great position and something that's going to help us tremendously.
I would agree. And last, meaning for the Air Pollution Control Board, I signed a letter in support.
You're the chair.
For it and thank the co-sponsors, congressional representatives, Carver Hall and Brownlee and Khan for introducing the bill. So definitely support this one.
Make a motion too.
So somehow you can magic, I would second it, but there isn't an opportunity. Thank you.
I think through this meeting, we'll just have to verbally say motion and second and then we can vote on the screen. That'll work.
Thank you so much. That's approved. Our next item is item 30 and that's the Authorization to Statute to Develop a Dramp Master Residential Lease Program for Homeless Persons Before Through the Housing and Urban Development ES, CES?
CES.
Okay.
Good mornings, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. My name is Kristi Madden with the County Executive Office. As we've reported to you on several occasions, we have a real shortage of rental housing in this county. And we have several veterans and chronically homeless single adults who have housing resources in the form of vouchers that come with supportive services, who have been unable to locate housing. Some of these voucher holders have had to apply for extensions, but extensions are limited. So we are at risk of losing some of these very valuable housing resources. So what we're doing is coming before you today, asking your Board to endorse the concept of developing a master leasing program for the county to help overcome some of the barriers to securing additional housing. Master leasing overcomes some of the objections of landlords by using an organization that has administrative capacity to enter into leases for either an entire structure or scattered site housing units. And then they sublet those units to the tenant who has the housing voucher to help pay for the rent and provide supportive services. The sponsor of the unit facilitates the tenant's compliance with all of the lease terms and provides supportive services that might be medical services, financial education, life skills training and the like. The rent is paid even if a unit should become vacant, which helps to overcome some of the objections of the landlord. It avoids their need to advertise a unit, to screen tenants and it provides guaranteed rental income. In the event that a tenant does have to be removed from a unit, it eliminates the responsibility of the landlord of having to handle that issue as well when the sponsor of the unit accommodates all of the issues associated with relocating a tenant and securing a new tenant for that property. There are a variety of models that exist. We don't have a specific program designed yet. We're asking your Board for permission to bring together interested parties to help design a system for the county. It could be that local government hires a nonprofit organization to serve as the master lessie. Government might serve that role. A housing authority could provide that role. Local government could buy insurance or underwrite an organization to help protect them from financial risk if one existed for that. So we're asking that your Board authorize us to bring some people together. We've had a lot of interest already based on the article in the paper. So I think that we have a good chance of expanding our housing resources. We have about 50 vouchers currently out there on the street with people looking for housing and possibly 15 more in the new Continuum of Care Grant. The healthcare agency is applying for some housing resources to match with the whole person care program. So that would be very exciting as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And they're going to help us with the vetting of whoever's going to be participating in the program and?
Correct. So the way people will get referred to this program is through the coordinated entry system where we look at who are all of the homeless people who have the needs that meet the criteria of the housing that becomes available and housing the people who are the most vulnerable first.
And this is through HUD, you know, and the CES?
Yes, all of these housing support resources are coming from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, whether they're BASH resources or coming through the Continuum of Care Grant.
And we'll be the, we're going to be the co-borrowers, if you want to call it, then?
Well, that's to be determined.
We're just going to assist, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't yet decided, designed the program.
Any additional questions?
I, thank you for thinking out of the box and as we have been looking in the Orange County facilities and all the different discussions of making sure that we have services along with the housing. The one thing that I was just wondering is if someone is removed, who's doing the repairs for the unit? Will be covering that? I mean, you get a rental and you move in and it looks all great and sparkling and then you have to move out. Who's takes care? Is that an added cost? How does that taken care of? Sorry to ask, but.
Yes. I'm going to ask Amy Luoma, who's our housing consultant, to come up to podium and speak to that issue. We do have a couple of years of history with community action doing master leasing and I don't know that that's been an issue when they're granted.
Typically, normal wear and tear of the unit would be the responsibility of the landlord. We haven't yet determined what we would do with damages or repair costs that exceed that normal amount. I know that in some of my discussions with landlords thus far, that's been a point to negotiate. And I think that that would be something that we might need to potentially consider that we need a small pot. I don't imagine it would need to be an exorbitant amount, but a small pot that might be applicable toward those excessive costs. But again, with the services that we're providing, we hope to mitigate those types of situations. The case management would be so extensive that we would hopefully never get to a place where that would even be necessary.
Right. And the reason why I'm asking is if you were a lessor, you would want to understand all the parameters. And so I wanted to make sure that we at least ask that because that takes some of the angst of doing that. If they know that they're supported, that, you know, if their apartment, you know, got wrecked for one reason or another, it would be supported as well. So that it's, we're meeting it at the table versus just saying you're out of luck.
Thank you for that acknowledgement because that would certainly need to be a part of the discussion.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you.
Do you see the county as being the sponsor of the master lease? And then how do you see proceeding with the approval of this?
Well, I think that we don't know yet whether or not the county would be the master lessie or whether we would contract with a nonprofit organization to take on that role. We're looking at different models in different areas of the country to see what works best in that scenario. And to Supervisor Long's point, you know, whether we took a pot of money and set aside as a guarantee to help alleviate any concerns of either the master lessor or the landlord themselves or whether we purchase some sort of an insurance policy to guarantee against that. Those are all factors that we would be looking at.
Supervisor Bennett, I'm sorry.
You know, it reminds me of the program that a private industry is, where they will loan money to see outcomes. This could very much result in outcomes that will reduce costs to government in the long term.
Yeah, it was interesting. I was at the Pay for Success convening on Friday around the BSCC grant that we have and got into a conversation with some people and I said, you know, one of the issues that we have and we've discussed is trying not to stigmatize renting to homeless people, right? And so the concept was what if we could design a system where we could incentivize the client's success in a unit? So maybe there was a system where we figure out how much, how much does it save the community by keeping a person stably housed? You quantify that. And then what if you could take that money and you put it into some sort of an investment account or something on behalf of that tenant? And as the tenant becomes... And as the tenant becomes successful in their housing, then a lot of times what we see is people are reluctant to move off of public assistance because they don't have the financial resources. If they encounter catastrophe, a car breaks down or something, then suddenly they're right back there where they were. So if we could come up with a system where we put money into an account, maybe partner with the credit union or somebody and build up an account for that tenant and help them incentivize their success, maybe we could help de-stigmatize that aspect as well. So just, you know, different ideas.
Backup money.
Be creative.
And also to move on to another housing.
Exactly. Move them on so that you can move other people in because the supportive housing resources are very limited and the turnover is very slow in these units in large part because people are afraid to move off of that assistance. So if we can help give them the confidence that it's okay to do that.
Supervisor Bennett?
This is a, a good solution to one of the challenges that we have, which is finding, you know, the, the limited places that are out there. Somebody'd say, why should I rent to a chronic homeless person when I've got other people out there? So this is a really good solution. I know it's been under consideration for the better part of a year here at county government. So I've been happy to have this finally come forward for us in, in terms of moving this forward and really appreciate that. The, the key thing I wanted to comment on was that, that whole problem of when we have these, these opportunities is to try to as much as possible be able to make these units then become available a year later for the next person and the next person so we can maximize the bank for the buck as, as we go forward. So thank you very much.
Kristi, I, I know this is unincorporated. Are you going to also involve the, the cities like Oxnard and Ventura eventually? Or we just start off?
I think the concept definitely would be to provide services countywide regardless of where, of where the housing is. I mean, most of the housing that we need to identify is within incorporated cities, right? And these vouchers are being used countywide currently. All we're trying to do is facilitate greater utilization of the resources.
Because right now we're talking about the Warming Shelter with Oxnard and Ventura, you know, we're going back and forth, but there may, might be a good opportunity to involve the cities also.
Absolutely.
Michael?
Yes, thank you Chair Zaragoza. I would just say, thank you. I'm really excited about this and, you know, Amy and working with HSA over the last year and Community Action has, has a list of those specific items that landlords had a concern about. So if we could meet those needs, then this, this could work. So it's really based on data and experience too, which is exciting. And then Kristi mentioned whole person care, which is that big grant that helps, all that wrapping around the existing community-based services. So it's a, it's a pretty exciting time. So thanks for your leadership.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the Board?
Make a motion?
Got a first one, Long, and second by Parks. Please vote.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's approved. Our next item is the ten o'clock time certain, so we're going to take a little break for about ten minutes and we'll be right back at ten o'clock. And we have item twenty, that's a presentation of resolution honoring Cheryl Suein. And this is going to be Suein, Supervisor?
Yes, thank you very much. Please come up to the diocent, or the podium, excuse me. First of all, I just would love to tell Cheryl, thank you so much for all of your service.
Thank you.
So many years. And at this time, I would like to read your resolution.
Okay.
So whereas the Board of Supervisors commend Cheryl Suein for her thirty-eight years of dedicated service for the County of Ventura through, through her work with probation agency. In nineteen seventy-nine, Cheryl began her career at the county as a clerk of the Child Service Division within the District Attorney's office and subsequently accepting a position of the probation agency. For the remainder of her career, she was loyal, dedicated her service to the probation agency in the following positions: typist clerk, legal processing assistant two, office systems coordinator one, OC, OSC two, and finally her current position of OC, OSC three. And Cheryl's many contributions to the agency and county are noteworthy. My tongue is tied today. Cheryl was instrumental in the development of the current probation records information system management, which resides in the Ventura County Integrated Justice Information System and continues to assist in developing enhancements in the system. Cheryl has been the chairperson for the Prism Data Integrity Committee for the past ten years. Cheryl has been essential in training all new probation employees with the use of probation information system. Cheryl's been the probation agency's California law enforcement telecommunications system coordinator and has overseen all departments of justice audits for the past eighteen years. Cheryl has played a significant role as the advisor to probation employees and probation business practices. She was awarded Support Staff of the Year in nineteen ninety-eight and has been nominated numerous times over the years. Cheryl is known and respected throughout the probation agency and the VCIJIS community. Her personal contributions and dedication to the agency and the community it serves is greatly admired. Cheryl has demonstrated unwavering commitment and professionalism to the probation agency. During times of adversity and challenge, she has continued to serve with positive demeanor and determination. Cheryl's hard work and loyalty is the commended, should be commended and admired. So whereas, to be resolved, that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors take great pleasure in honoring Cheryl Suein upon her retirement and does hereby express its gratitude for thirty-eight years of dedicated public service to the County of Ventura. The Board wishes further to extend to Cheryl best wishes for a long, joyful, and healthy retirement. So with that, Mark?
Chairs Zaragoza, members of the Board, CEO Powers, thank you for, for recognizing Cheryl. Thirty-eight years. We had a, a party for her last week and it was a, a fun time. I got a chance to see a lot of our agency retirees that came out to, to recognize Cheryl. But in, in addition to the thirty-eight years, she had two years, two and a half years of extra help. So really forty years altogether when you think of entire service to the County of Ventura, which is just fantastic. I mean Cheryl is one of the first people that, that I met when I first started back in nineteen eighty-eight and she has served in a, in a special capacity to me because she is the historian of the, of the agency and our last tier one represented employees. So if I can't remember some of the things going on in the agency, I would check in with Cheryl and she would enlighten me on some of the stuff. So we're going to miss her. She's just been a fixture with the probation agency for so long and I, I have mixed feelings up here. I'm excited for Cheryl. In the meantime, we have some pretty big shoes to fill. So with that, she's absolutely wonderful. So I didn't want to take up too much of her time, but just to let you know how much, how very appreciated she is with the agency.
So Cheryl, was, was Mark five years old when you started? Was he five years old when you started? Mark?
Yeah. He acted it out. I just want to say it's been a great pleasure working for the County of Ventura. I thoroughly enjoyed it, but I'm looking forward to retirement and just doing whatever I want. That's it.
Well, I know that you have a lot of support behind you and that just shows how much love and appreciation they have for you in all your hours and service and what a wonderful thing that is. But I also would like to ask the Board to come down so that we can get a picture.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations. We're going to make it easy and we're going to just stand here. All right, one more to the left. This might be your best name. All right, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thanks for thirty-eight years.
Forty years, my goodness. I was twelve when I was there.
Forty years and you're still smiling.
Yes.
That's wonderful. Thank you Cheryl and all the, and Mark and all the folks from probation. Good job. Thank you. Our next item again is Supervisor Long, this presentation of resolution proclaiming the week of September seven twenty-three, twenty seventeen as Constitution Week in Ventura County.
Yes, and today I'd like to have Debra and those to come up to the podium. As this Constitution Week proclaim references Public Law nine one five, chapter eight seven five, approved on August second nineteen fifty-six of the U.S. Congress, which invites people in the U.S. to observe such a week in schools, churches, and other suitable places with appropriate ceremonies, activities. And we actually are serving several other local governing bodies, including the VCOE, city of Ojai, Camarillo, Port Wayneimi did it last night, Oxnard is tonight. I know of our clerk is also doing certain promotions and so forth. And so we wanted to bring this forward to our Board as well. So let me read the proclamation. It says, where the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian document of the liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas in September seventeen, two thousand seventeen marks the two-hundred-and-thirtieth anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitted and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial, memorial anniversary and to a, to the patriotic celebrations which primitive it. And whereas Public Law nine one five, chapter eight seven five, approved August second nineteen fifty-six guarantees issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through to the twenty-third of Constitution Week. Therefore, it is to be resolved that Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week and encourages all citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the Constitution and the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian document of their liberties. So Debra, could you put, say your names at, just for public record?
Yes, I'm Debra Baber-Savala.
And I'm Gloria Merci-Chinea.
I'm from Port Wayneimi and if you will indulge me for just a moment, I have a couple of remarks to make. Constitution Week twenty seventeen began on Sunday, but as evidenced here, it's never too late to put in a good word for this law-giving, life-affirming document. Our Constitution lays out our liberties and laws which delivers the lifestyles we enjoy. Words, the ideas these words convey throughout generations are the linchpins of our nation. It is the document elected officials throughout our nation swear or affirm to uphold. On September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, two-hundred-and-thirty years ago, our Constitution was ready for ratification. Its authors were so concerned with this document's words that in addition to thousands of copies produced in English, they also produced fifteen hundred in German for Pennsylvania citizens and several hundred in Dutch for New York's large ethnic population. And with our compliments, we give you copies in Spanish. Our founders were intimately familiar with the unique, compelling, and paradigm-shifting notions about government when they wrote our Constitution. They wanted to make it possible for the vast majority of our nascent nation's population to understand the words citizens were getting ready to proclaim as the heart and soul of the United States. The original document had forty-five hundred words. Our Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments, added four years later in seventeen ninety-one, contains four-hundred-and-sixty-two words. Slaves in our nation's history were freed by fewer than five hundred words and women throughout the United States won suffrage with thirty-nine words. Today, our Constitution with its twenty-seven amendments contains fewer than eight thousand words. These few words have influenced untold governments and council's constitutions throughout the world. Here in Ventura County, the Board of Education produced a proclamation for the Constitution Week, Camarillo and Ojai, as Commissioner Long has said, Port Wayneimi last night where I live, Oxnard where Gloria lives. And additionally, we collected over seven hundred symbolic signatures from fellow Ventura County residents, including nearly five dozen from children. I'm proud, as is Gloria, to stand here alongside our Ventura County Board of Supervisors as you have done the same thing. Lastly, too late to get something done this year at the state level, Assemblymember Jackie Irwin's office did honor the Constitution earlier this week with postings on her social media accounts. This initiative is truly nonpartisan because our Constitution is nonpartisan. When it was written and ratified, the Democrat Party was still forty-one, forty-one years away from existence in eighteen twenty-eight and the Republican Party was sixty-seven years away from formation in fifteen, in eighteen fifty-four. Thank you again, Board, for together with us saying happy birthday to our Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing today. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
We are providing our apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for sharing.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, our next item is presentation of a resolution recognizing the month of September twenty seventeen as Hunger Action Month in Ventura County. And I think we have Monica White, interim CEO for Food Share, and Joe Schroeder, I don't see Joe, but he's apparently the board chair of and president of Ventura County Credit Union. So I'm going to read a resolution and let you choose. This is a resolution recognizing September twenty seventeen as Hunger Action Month, whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and the state of California and County of Ventura because the intake of nutrition food is essential to the growth and development of healthy individuals. And whereas established in nineteen eighty-three, Food Share and its dedicated partner agencies throughout Ventura County work in collaborative effort to effectively distribute twelve million pounds, twelve million pounds of, of healthy food to those in need every year through Food Share programs such as a senior kid program, the kids farmer's market, the Food Share warehouses, and throughout as many partnering agencies. And whereas the agricultural community of Ventura County has been critical in supporting the continued efforts to feed the hungry by continued, by maintaining a leadership role in providing much-needed produce and protein to the hungry. Now therefore be resolved, the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in proclaiming September twenty seventeen as Hunger Action Month and further recognizes and supports the importance of role of Food Share and its many partner agencies that play in providing food and nutrition to those in need. And this is presented to you today. Would you share a couple of words? Now go to her.
Thank you Chairs Zaragoza. I appreciate that. And good morning to the supervisors, CEO, Mr. Powers. I'm happy to be here today along with our staff from Food Share. And my name is Monica White. I'm the interim CEO at Food Share and I'm honored to serve in this position. As many of you know, Food Share is amidst a time of transition. The last ninety days have been filled with some tough business decisions, but with the support of our Board of Directors, our loyal staff, and amazing volunteer force, I'm proud of what we've accomplished so far. We surfaced with a leaner staff, a reduced budget of one-point-eight million dollars, reduced five one-point-eight million dollars, and have a plan and commitment to, to continue serving and feeding every single one of our hungry seventy-four thousand five hundred hungry children, seniors, and family members. We don't We don't often think of hunger being a problem in Ventura County, but the fact is that one in six remain food insecure, meaning they're not exactly sure where their next meal is going to be coming from. Our goal to distribute 12 million pounds of food again this year can and will be accomplished. Last week, we had the pleasure of reconnecting with one of Food Share's most beloved original founders, Jewel Petty. With an outpouring of support at our annual Blue Gene Ball, over 400 Food Share supporters joined us in celebrating Jewel's 90th birthday party. A special thank you to Supervisor Long and CEO Mr. Powers for attending. Your support is appreciated. The highlight of my week, though, was spending a day at Food Share with Jewel Petty and her daughter Penny. Touring our 32,000 square foot warehouse, Jewel reminisced about how it all started nearly 40 years ago in her garage. Listening to her speak to our volunteer group from Farmers Insurance as they sorted rescued food, she reminded us that Food Share's success comes from the pure generosity of our loyal and awesome volunteers, both then and now. And in her speech to our attendees that night, that petite yet mighty woman summed it up for us perfectly. "Food Share belongs to the community, and it's up to you to ensure that it thrives." On behalf of our eight Board of Directors, 28 staff members, 2,100 annual volunteers, and 200 partner agencies and pantries throughout Ventura County, we take that directive very seriously. I'd like to personally invite each of you to come out and tour Food Share if you have not done that, or do it again because the Monica tour is a little different, in order for you to truly experience the Food Share mission. Jewel Petty is an inspiration to us all, and in her words, "With the support of our community, we promise to keep feeding people," just as she intended. So thank you very much. We have a little gift for you, a fork for you to keep to remember that it's Hunger Action Month, so thank you very much for having us today.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for all the good work you do. There's a lot of people that need your help. And I'd like to take a photo with you.
Thank you. We would love to take a photo.
Okay, who wants to hold this?
I will.
You're the boss.
I'm the interim boss, yeah.
I just want to say thank you very much. Congratulations. You had a spectacular event and a great fundraiser as well. I also wanted to congratulate Jennifer. I just heard you got Pacific Times 40 top, what is it?
Forty under forty.
Forty under forty. I wish I could say that. We're trying to make sure they can, maybe they can build some more bars. But thank you for all you do. It means a lot to so many people, and you might not be thanked as much as you should, but just thank you.
And I just also want to give my kudos to Monica, who's really taken over and done such an excellent job already, and I can see the success already that's coming from your leadership. So I just, congratulations and best wishes to you and your organization.
Thank you Supervisor Parks.
And thank you for the invitation to, you know, to the center. I've been there before, and you do an excellent job. Supervisor Bennett.
Really an important mission, and I just appreciate how committed you guys are to reminding all the rest of us that it's an important mission for all of us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just say to Monica and your team, you've made Food Share stronger, and you're heading in a great direction. It was a great event, also capped off by the Community Foundation donating a check for $204,000, which I think is a real endorsement for the work that you're doing. And a great event, and by the way, if you need somewhere to store the life-size cutout of the sheriff, I'd be happy to store it for this giver.
Thank you.
It's safe in my office, thank you.
Our, we've been so efficient today that our next item is 10:30, so we'll take another five-minute break.
Oh, talk it.
Ready? Then we're going to resume our meeting, and our next item is Item 23, Time Certain, its Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming the Week of September 22/28/17 as Falls Prevention Awareness Week of Ventura County. And I'd like to call Dr. Duncan and also Victoria Jump up to the podium, and then I'm going to read a little resolution that I have here. And this is a resolution, Fall Prevention Awareness Week, whereas 13.5% of Ventura County citizens or over 1,000, excuse me, 114,000 people aged 65 and older. It's estimated that one-third of the adults over 65 and 50% of adults over 50 will fall each year with a medical cost each fall-related, oop, hospitalization estimate at an average of between $37,000 to $60,000. Whereas falls are the leading cause of injury death among people over age 65, and the leading cause of doctor visits, hospitals admissions, and emergency room visits. In 2014 and 15, over 12,000 older adults in Ventura County suffered injuries from a fall great enough to result in EMS involvement and a large fraction of those were hospitalized. Whereas falling and the fear of falling can lead to depression, isolation, diminished mobility, loss of functional independence, injuries from falls are largely preventable community health problems. Whereas a cause of falls is composed of multiple contributing factors, including lacking the strength, the low extremities, the use of multiple medication, reduced vision, chronic health problems, and unsafe environments. Whereas concentrated efforts are being made in Ventura County to reduce falls and fall-related injuries by using multifaceted interventions such as evidence-based classes, such as Matter of Balance, Stepping On, Walking with Ease, and Tai Chi. And whereas the state, at the state level SCR 77, Loenthal Fall Prevention Awareness Week has passed the Senate and the Assembly. At the federal level, the Safety of Seniors Act 2007 was passed in April. This bill calls for expansion of public health programs, education outreach, and research activities related to fall prevention. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the values of accomplishments of the trauma practice, practice nears, EM, EMS, fire departments, public health Ventura County Area Agency on Aging, and numerous other agencies involved in the Elderly Fall Prevention Coalition of Ventura County by designating Fall Prevention Week Awareness Week. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of September 22/28/17 as Fall Prevention Awareness Week in Ventura County with the theme "United We Stand and Prevent Falls." We call upon our citizens and interested groups to observe the week with appropriate activities and promote awareness of fall prevention, including but not limited to the Fall Prevention Awareness Seminar in Simi Valley Senior Center on Friday, September 22, 2017 from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Dr. Duncan.
Good morning Board, Supervisor Zaragoza, and Mike Powers. Thank you for allowing me to give this presentation. It's been on a yearly basis that we've given this presentation, and we truly appreciate all the, all the help in regards to Fall Prevention Coalition. I'm going to give a brief presentation about Coalition and how we started. This is a picture of my dad. I bring his picture up here each year because he took a fall a few years ago, and his life has changed remarkably ever since then. He's now 84, he turned 84 last week, but he currently isn't able to walk, and he's bed-bound. He currently lives in Houston with my, the rest of my family, and you can imagine dealing with Hurricane Harvey when you're bed-bound and have to be transported and taken out of your home during that period of time. But fortunately, he's doing okay, and you know, hopefully he'll keep unplugging. I aspire to be like him when I grow up. So this year's theme, the national theme for our Fall Prevention Week is 10 Years Standing Together to Prevent Fall, and we're glad to be a part of the Coalition. California is glad to be a part of it, that's been ongoing for the past 10 years. And we started this five years ago in Ventura County. So it's a great honor to be a part of this Awareness Week. In Ventura County, like you know, our population is close to 850,000, and amongst those, we have about 13% over the age of 65, and that's quote-unquote the elderly. It's the definition of the American College of Surgeons. It's not my definition because truly at the age of 65, you're just about spry and ready to keep on going. So California has a lot of things to boast about, but one of them is having one of the largest elderly population in the United States. And based on the population demographics and projections, our population in the world will go from 11% of those over 65 to about 20%, which is a huge jump, and we have to be ready for it and be available to take care of our elderly and prevent them from having mishaps. So do we have a problem? Well, yes, we do. I mean, the reason why we have such a big problem is falls are the number-one cause of unintentional injury deaths in those over the age of 65. Now, in each year, about 33% of those over the age of 65 will fall. While it goes up to 50% as you age even older than that, at the age of 80, it goes up to 50%. And these kind of injuries vary anywhere from head injuries or hip fractures, rib fractures, or other fractures that can occur. And it can cause a big change in the lifestyle of the individuals that fall. Hence the reason why we're pushing to make a big change in it. And is it that bad? Well, it is, because about every half an hour of the hour, somebody dies from a fall, an elderly individual dies from a fall. And every 15 seconds, in probably all the emergency departments in the United States, somebody is seen in the emergency department for a fall-related reason. And the big thing about this is between 65 to 70% of these falls occur in homes, so we can make a difference in our elderly individuals' homes to prevent these falls. And as you know, as you increase the population, the falls will potentially go up, and that goes to increase in the amount of dollars spent, because California alone spends about $2.4 billion a year on non-fatal falls, and these are not falls that eventually lead to death, but non-fatal falls. And the cost of hospitalization can vary anywhere from about $37,000 to about $75,000, all based on the level of the injury. And the cost of our healthcare system was back in the year 2000, close to $20 billion, and that figure has almost doubled, and it's going to almost triple by the year 2050 when we have the increase of our population. Now, we have a great facility at VCMC that was just completed, and we moved into on August 20th, and it's a great place to take care of patients, but obviously, we want to prevent you from coming there if it's preventable, because falls are largely preventable, and we want to keep, make sure that you stay out of it if you can. You know, it's always nice to visit and be taken care of if you have something that's more on an elective basis, but you know, trauma is no accident, so it's going to happen, but we'll take care of you very well. Now, as a result of the, the number of patients that we were having as far as increased mortality with our elderly, we decided to form a coalition. And this coalition involves a combination of the EMS, the trauma centers, both trauma and non-trauma, as well as the public and private agencies, and we have a lot of agencies involved. We have some representatives over here, but I'm glad to be a part of this organization. And this is a snapshot of most of those involved in the coalition, and we have a few left off, but right smack in the center is the County of Ventura, the Board of Supervisors, you provide some support to us, and we truly appreciate that, because without you, we won't be where we are today. The role of our coalition is as such, you know, it starts in the field when the EMS see a patient, when somebody has a call for a fall. That individual gets either a 911 routing by the EMS, or they come to the emergency department by their private vehicles. But when the EMS go into the field, they're the first point of contact. As a result, they have the ability to make a difference in that individual's life by either causing some mitigation measures to occur, such as giving them literature and telling them about little things such as cross-checking their medications, or making sure that homes are nicely lit. And then the individuals get transported to either one of our three hospitals, which is in the pilot section, VCMC, CMH, or Ojai. Subsequent to that, the information that's imparted is normally sent to a website, which is housed by the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging. And we have a coordinator over there, her name is Deana, and Deana is awesome because she ends up connecting with the patients on a, you know, every other or three-day basis to determine what their needs are, because some of these individuals need to have their homes either restructured because they have, you know, showerheads that are lacking, or they have grab bars lacking in the bathrooms, or they need to have the homes nicely safe for them to be prevented from falling. Some need primary care providers, so the public health department can go out and make that connection. And we have evidence-based classes, evidence-based classes that have been proven to work, and these classes prevent individuals from falling over and over again. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but this is some of the literature we leave in the field that has to do with making your home safe and asking your primary care provider about your medications, about certain things you can do to prevent falling. And to be on the right track, we looked at data also from the EMS side and the emergency department, and this is a group of individuals who I currently work with at the American College of Surgeons. They put together some information about looking into what the EMS do, and have come to the conclusion that the EMS are in a prior position to make a change in an individual's lifestyle if they make an intervention in the field. At VCMC, we have a high number of patients that fall who are over the age of 65. Now, in the past, we used to have a mortality rate of 16% back in 2010. And the good thing about the fact that we've been doing this program for several years is that our mortality rate has dropped down to 2.3%, which is remarkable, and it's holding steady over there. And this is risk-adjusted information that goes to our trauma quality improvement program. Now, the big thing about this, though, is even though our mortality rate is that low, but nevertheless, the mortality in those over the age of 65 is still twice that of those less than 65. In looking at the data in the EMS going from 2013 through 2015, tracking the data from the pre-institution of our program, which started in July 2014 until after that, there was a slight uptick in the number of calls in the county, but the good thing about that is the number of patients transported to the hospitals decreased. Pre-institution of the program in the entire county was about 5,000, and post-institution it was 4,000. And here are some percentages of it showing that it went from 66% pre-transport to about 50% post-transport. We also looked at our evidence-based program to determine what works for us in our county, and found that based on looking at the evidence-based programs, we need to institute those, even though it doesn't work for everyone, but nevertheless, we did a study at the Eastern Association for the Surgery of Trauma, and it was published in the Journal of Trauma last year that depicted that if your risks stratify in your community, you can determine exactly what works for you. And we zoned in on our evidence-based programs, which include these five, well, four initially, Matter of Balance, Walk with Ease, Tai Chi, and then Stepping On, Otago is soon to come. And actually, one of these classes is currently being held at the Pier Pond facility, and it's been ongoing ever since mid-August, and it's going till November 2nd, I believe. So here are the evidence-based classes that have been conducted over the course of the past year. It's probably not up to date, but Matter of Balance is by far the most number of classes that have been given with Tai Chi and Stepping On, et cetera. So we're trying to go throughout the entire county to give these classes, because for those individuals that fell and partook in these evidence-based classes, their fall rate again was only 6%. But in those that fell and chose not to partake in the classes, their fall rate went up to 18%, which is three times the amount, as you can see. And hence the reason why we're having this Fall Prevention Forum coming up on the 22nd this Friday, and Supervisor Foy will be out there. We've had Supervisor Parks come out in the past, Supervisor Long, and now Supervisor Foy. We're trying to go from one part of the county to the other. We held it in Ventura, Oxnard, Camarillo, Thousand Oaks, and now Simi Valley. So we're trying to spread our wings throughout the county, and we're going to have a lot of great activities. We have Dr. Lambing, Dr. Helmer, and Dr. Sean Skilling, who's one of our vascular surgeons locally. locally. This time around, we have the American Disability Act involving those that connect, affiliate with translation, as well as with sign language. So that's something big that's coming down the pike, and we have a pharmaceutical drop-off bin that's being organized by the Simi Valley Police Department, and then a hopeless slippers swap, or sloppy slipper swap. So you can bring your slippers, your old slippers, and swap them for some new socks with grips on them. Then we have Doppler screening, GATE screening, balance screening, audiology testing, bone density, pulmonary function tests, glucose, blood pressure, oxygen saturation, and then low-vision testing also. So it's gonna be a great day. I also like to thank GSA for publicizing this for us, because they've done a lot of work in regards to making signs for us. Our next step will be to try to branch out to the entire county. It's, it's a difficult thing, but we're trying to obtain funding to do it, include our skilled nursing facilities and the insurance companies. And once again, I'd like to thank Mike Powers for this, Supervisor Foy for allowing us to hold it and coming out to, to give some remarks, the Board of Supervisors, Healthcare Agency, and then all our collaborators and supporters, and we have some of them over here, who I'd like to come up in a, in a few minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. This is an excellent program, and I think it's important that, that we share all this information, you know, to our seniors. And of course, you know, you've been in Oxnard too, and I was there, what, four or five years ago, I think.
Correct.
Excellent program. Let's take a photo.
I know, it's also really entertaining for the seniors who attend, and, and sometimes they get dance lessons and from the doctor.
Yes.
We need some height.
This is like a good song. Hold on, here first.
out there.
Great presentation. Our next item is a public hearing. This is item twenty-four, adoption of twenty-seventeen, twenty MOA between the County of Ventura and Ventura County Professional Peace Officers Association. And this is a public hearing.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CEO Powers. Since this is the second hearing, I'll keep this extremely brief. The item for you today is a recommendation for your board to hold a second public hearing on the adoption of the successor agreement between the County of Ventura and the Ventura County Professional Peace Officers Association's patrol unit. And we ask that you adopt the agreement at the conclusion of this hearing. You guys know the details, so I can just go straight to questions. You guys have any questions?
Any questions? Again, this is a public hearing. I don't have any public speakers, so at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Okay. First and a second. Okay, thank you, Mike. And again, thank all the staff again for the excellent work, you know, you've been doing, Mike, you know, and your staff. Excellent, excellent work. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And that's been approved.
And thank you to Lori Gaines.
Thank you. Our next item is item twenty-five. This is again a public hearing, adoption of resolution amending the county and watershed protection district service rates and fees for twenty-seventeen eighteen. Tabine.
Good morning, Chairs Argos, Honorable Board Members, CEO Powers. I'm Tabine Coese with the Public Works Agency. The item we have before you is a recommendation to hold a public hearing on the adoption of a resolution amending the county and watershed protection district service rates for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, and at the conclusion of that hearing, to adopt that resolution. Specifically, what we're recommending is that your board amend the service rates for the classifications of planner three and four to reflect ten percent salary range extension that was approved by your board in May of twenty-seventeen. And secondly, to establish service rates for the classification of administrative aid one, two, non-exempt, oh, sorry, exempt, FLSA exempt, that was established by your board in May of twenty-seventeen. Each year, county departments and agencies prepare their service rates and fees in May in preparation for the annual consultative rates and fees board letter that's adopted by your board in May. This year, the classification changes were made in May that didn't permit our agency to, to incorporate those changes by the April development date that, that we had. Therefore, we are coming to you now with a recommendation to adopt those proposed amended rates for our, our current fiscal year, retroactive to July first, twenty-seventeen. This will allow the Public Works Agency to bill for its services at the true fully burdened cost and achieve full cost recovery as permitted by your board policy. That concludes my, my presentation, and I'm available to ask any, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tabine. This is a public hearing, open to public hearing. I don't have any speakers, so then a close of public hearing. It was a pleasure of the board. A motion by Long. Second by Bennett. Please vote. And that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tabine. Well, we're way ahead again, so. So we're gonna take recess for about five minutes, and then we'll come up with the eleven o'clock time. Okay, we're gonna resume the Board of Supervisors meeting for September nineteenth. This is item twenty-six, a study session to review and provide direction regarding proposed alternatives for the accessory dwelling unit regulations in the coastal and non-coastal zones. Charles?
Good morning, Chairs Argos, members of the Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Charles Anthony. I am the project planner for this accessory dwelling unit project known, also known as ADUs. I am the, in front of you today. I want to start out by pointing out that exhibit number one of your board packet was incorrectly labeled as related to project number PL seventeen dash zero-zero-zero-eight. This was an error. It should have been labeled PL seventeen dash zero-zero-nine-eight. So if I, I'll just provide this to the staff, if that's okay.
Okay. Rosa.
I'm here with a report on ADUs, because your board adopted an urgency ordinance at your March fourteenth hearing. At that time, you requested planning staff to prepare additional analysis on alternatives and issues related to ADUs for your consideration. I'm now returning to you with that information. I'm also here to get your board's direction and preferred options for the five issues under consideration today, which will be discussed. Your board is being asked to provide direction to staff on five crucial issues related to ADUs, again, accessory dwelling units, before we draft a new regulations. They are to identify the desired unit size and minimum parcel size for ADUs in the Ojai traffic impact area, provide direction on creation of a new fire hazard impact area, identify the minimum parcel size requirement for ADUs in non-impact areas, determine whether to regulate ADUs resulting from conversion of detached accessory structures in open space in agricultural zones, and to identify the extent of the coastal zoning ordinance amendments to be processed by planning division staff. Your board is being asked to provide direction, excuse me, I'm, I'm going to walk you through each of these today. The direction you provide will be integrated into a permanent ADU regulations that will be prepared and brought to the Planning Commission and your board for review and adoption prior to the expiration of the ADU interim ordinance. Just as a refresher, the intent of the new state ADU law was to reduce the regulatory, physical, and financial barriers to constructing ADUs statewide. Your board adopted the ADU interim ordinance on March fourteenth, twenty-seventeen, as a temporary urgency measure to achieve compliance with the state's new ADU law, to allow application of development standards, and to designate impact areas where allowed. Before I jump into the five issues we're seeking direction on today, I wanted to briefly review the different types of ADUs allowed under state law. So this over here, we call, these are the attached, these are the attached ADUs. As you can see, there's, would be the principal dwelling, existing principal dwelling up here would be an attached. And over here are the, would be a, simply a detached accessory dwelling unit over here. The minimum parcel size, or rather, the, the current ADU ordinance limits them to a maximum of fifty percent for an attached ADU over here. It allows a maximum of fifty percent up to twelve-hundred square feet, and that's fifty percent of the principal dwelling. Back over here to the detached, is that for the detached unit, the, allows it twelve-hundred square feet. And then there's the, the other type, which is what we're calling the interior ADUs, and those are the type of ADUs that are built within existing space. That is, no new footprint is created, no new addition has not popped out from the existing dwelling. There'd be, the state law requires that they be allowed within an existing dwelling or any type of accessory structure on the lot.
Charles, on, on number one, that's fifty percent of the twelve-hundred, or?
Yeah, the fifty percent. The fifty percent would be of the principal dwelling. So if you had a two-thousand-square-foot dwelling, you could have a one-thousand-square-foot ADU attached.
Be attached, which would be fifty percent of the?
Yeah, of, yeah, so it's the fifty percent of the principal dwelling.
Okay.
Of the existing dwelling, right?
Of the existing, yeah.
Existing dwelling.
Okay.
All right. The attached and detached ADUs are allowed a maximum of three bedrooms. Although the graphic shows a maximum of twelve-hundred square foot for the ADUs, parcels forty acres or more in size are currently allowed, ADUs up to eighteen-hundred square feet, with up to four bedrooms. There is no limit on the number of bedrooms for the interior ADUs. I want to focus for a moment on one type of ADU, which is the interior ADU. These ADUs are different because the new state law exempts them from planning permit, from planning permit when these criteria are met. This both expedites processing and prevents ADUs from meeting our typical development standards like a twenty-foot front setback, lot coverage, size restrictions, and the rest development-type standards. The planning division is essentially bypassed, and the applicant may proceed to the building and environmental health departments to receive a permit if they meet applicable regulations. This will, this will be relevant as your board reviews one of the items before you, your discussion today, which we'll discuss in a few minutes. Upon further review with county council, planning staff determined that where interior ADUs involve the conversion of garages for the principal dwelling, replacement covered parking can be required. This will primarily affect the parcels that are less than one acre in size, where zoning ordinance requires two covered parking spaces outside of the required setbacks. In general, it would not be feasible to convert a garage in an ADU on a smaller lot where replacement covered parking cannot be added.
And when you say smaller parcel, what size is that? Is that four thousand, six thousand, five hundred? What is that determination?
What we're, what we focused on was a six thousand, because we looked at three different categories, is six thousand to nine thousand, nine thousand to ten, and ten thousand above. So that's, that's what we're focusing on.
So at the sixty-five hundred square foot, when you convert your garage and you have to have a carport, there's no room for the carport? Is that what you're stating?
Yes, that would be for the interior type ADUs.
Okay.
That's specific to those.
Thank you.
But at six thousand, you cannot convert.
I'm sorry?
At six thousand, you cannot convert.
Well, you could convert, for the, for the interior type ADUs that you convert, those can be converted, there's no minimum parcel size requirement, as, so that, that, there's no minimum at all for those.
But parking spaces in the, or?
For the, for the interior type ADUs, there are no parking space requirements, there are none that can be required or applied by the county.
Okay.
And I have questions, too. So if you remove the parking spaces, one would get inside the garage, and they will park out on the street or in the driveway. And generally, municipalities don't want cars parked in the driveway, because it blocks the garage cars from exiting, so that won't even be an issue. So we're essentially saying, park in your driveways, park along the streets.
Well, to that, are they actually ever parking in their garage? I always wonder.
That's the theory.
Right. Not many people I know use their actual garage for a garage.
It is a change in how, you know, garages are intended to be used, which is to put cars inside of.
Especially for the interior ADUs, correct?
And so, in this case, we'll have cars certainly on the driveways or in the streets, and that will just be additional cars that we won't be restricting where they park.
That is possible, yes.
And so they could spill over into the neighborhood, essentially. I know that's one of the issues that we hear with this. The other question I have, if you're talking about interior ADUs, how would the last bullet regarding setbacks come into play?
So we, in that case, we, the county, could apply its side and rear setbacks in that, because they are specifically identified for fire, for fire safety purposes in our ordinance.
So if they are not already in compliance with their side and rear setbacks, they can't do this? But if they are in compliance, they can do it?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's why that bullet's there. And then also, when we determine setbacks in our codes, do we do it based on just what the fire safety says, or do we actually have some, you know, high-quality standards and that go beyond just the fire safety requirements?
For our setbacks?
Yes.
For the, the fire setback identified in our current ordinance, it identifies not only for fire safety purposes, but also says for just allowing for, sort of visually, from a design standpoint, it actually is better not to have two dwellings, for instance, right, sharing the same property line, only with one foot in between each on, on either side of the property line. But I don't recall if, and we can find that information for you, but I don't recall what other type of reasons that we were identified, but other than making it a reasonable space between structures.
So those, those are the two concerns that I hear from my community are, will the, not just the interior ones, but will ADUs reduce setbacks, or will, they will recognize all of a sudden buildings a lot closer to their property lines? And, and secondly, the spill-over parking? And of course, we have the fire safety issues, and I'm glad you're addressing those, but those two, I, I would like to get fuller information by the time it comes back.
Okay.
What are, what exactly are we talking about in setbacks? What are the anticipated impacts of the parking no longer going in the garage?
Well, Charles says maybe the, the fire safety setbacks is probably the minimum. Well, Charles says maybe the, the fire safety setbacks is probably the minimum, right?
That I would have to find out.
Check that out.
Yeah, we'd have to check on that, that distance. And I know the fire marshal's with us here today, so I don't know if we could, but get some further information, but.
Okay.
With that, let me jump into the methodology used for the groundwater quality and traffic-impacted areas. In order to protect groundwater resources from high nitrates, the current ADU interim ordinance requires larger minimum parcel sizes for ADUs in the groundwater quality impact area than in the non-impact areas of the county, which are all the other areas outside of the impact areas. County groundwater staff is currently reanalyzing the minimum parcel size requirements for ADUs on septic in the nitrate-impacted areas. And just, if I can get this to work. It's a little bit, yeah. This area, then the light gray, is the entire groundwater quality impact area. They are also reviewing the boundaries of these areas. The number of bedrooms in an ADU is now generally considered more indicative of potential nitrate impacts than the size of the ADU. It's expected that minimum parcel size requirements may shift slightly in this area as new data is compiled to reflect current conditions. Kim Loeb, groundwater manager, is here to answer any questions your board may have about their methodology. That takes care of the groundwater quality impacts. Now I'd like to move on to the Ojai traffic impact area, which is the first of the five issues that we're seeking direction from your board today.
So let me confirm. So you're stating we have a, if we did an ADU of 1,200 square foot, and we only put two bedrooms in there, that would have less impact on the nitrates than if we put three bedrooms, correct?
That is the methodology that's being used by the groundwater staff and groundwater division today.
Okay, because it's, you're packing more people in, supposedly?
Yes, the first.
The potential.
The first bedroom or bedroom equivalent, and that can be a loft, or a den, or any other type of something that'd be equivalent to a regular bedroom. Anyway, those, those would require that the, those, the first bedroom would be for two people. Any additional bedroom has, is considered to have one person connected to it.
And so when you talk about the square footage, and that's kind of one of the questions you ask us, should it be 100, you know, 1,200 square feet, or? What I think is more important than the square footage is the number of bedrooms.
Yes, and the groundwater.
You're not really asking us that, though, are you?
For the groundwater quality impact area, that's, again, we're focusing on the methodology that's, that they're using to, for nitrates, from the science of making sure that there's a safe cleaning water. So, so that's a different standard that we, than we are using for outside of that impact area.
But I think that's a good question for us to have, is go to the number of bedrooms, not the square footage when we're dealing with this issue. That should be something that we weigh in on, I would hope.
And if staff, I mean, if the, your board directs us to do so, that would, we'd certainly look into that.
Okay.
Okay, now onto the Ojai traffic impact area. Essentially, segments of the Highway 33 in the Ojai Valley are, operate at a level of service during peak hours that does not meet the county's general policy, county general plans, policies. In 2003, this led to an adoption of stricter standards for ADUs in the Ojai traffic impact area. Specifically, the maximum unit size for ADUs was set at 700 square feet and one bedroom. And the minimum lot size was set at one acre. Since that time, there have been numerous inquiries regarding the possibility of increasing the allowable ADU size in the Ojai Valley. It's an imperfect science, but planning staff believes that given the very low numbers of ADUs actually constructed in this area over the last 10 years, it may make sense to increase the allowable unit size to at least 900 square feet, or 50% of the size of the main dwelling unit, if it's an attached ADU. Transportation division staff reviewed this issue and found no demonstrable difference in the number of peak hour trips generated by a 700 square foot, a unit versus a nine or 1,200 square foot ADU unit. Dave Fleisch.
Question.
I'd like to just stop and ask about that, and I'd just like to ask our transportation director, I mean. I know that Mr. Fleisch didn't, look, you don't have any, any data, but I'm just, do you disagree with, with, this is my common sense analysis of this. If there are three bedrooms in a place versus one bedroom in a place, you're more likely to have a second car owner, and therefore, you're more likely to have more of a traffic impact. That's, that's just my common sense analysis. Do you disagree with that?
I, I don't disagree with the common sense, but the current analysis that we use, all the trip generation manuals don't refer to size, number of bedrooms, whatever, it's either a residence or it's not a residence. And so the calculations are the same regardless of the size of the house or the number of bedrooms.
So regardless of the size of the house and regardless of the number of bedrooms, the calculation is just the same calculation, no matter whether it's, whether it's 700 one-bedroom unit, or whether it's a 3,000 square foot, five-bedroom home?
Yes, sir. There's a different.
It's the same calculation.
Yes, sir, there's a different calculation for apartments, which is what we use for this.
But for single-family residents, there's none.
That's correct.
And I, I just, I just would offer the board, that, that defies common sense, I think, in terms of, as we're looking at this. I don't, I mean, I can understand why transportation, you know, you've, you've got to be consistent in terms of doing it. But to say transportation determines the traffic impacts are the same, they're, they're the same because we're using a definition that it doesn't matter how, how, how many people live in the house, or how, anything, the, the traffic impact's going to be the same, because we just say one single-family residence is one single-family residence, correct?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Dave, can I ask a question? A lot of cities use the two-person or three-person per house, household, is that what you're, that we're using here?
We use.
Is it add to it or not, just for?
We use the IT, the ITE trip generation manual, which has different amounts of trips for varying types of use. And for residences, again, it doesn't distinguish between the size and the, it's a standard number that we use regardless for a residence or an apartment.
Because I know, some cities use, you know, a 2.5 or three-person per household, and then they always have maybe two cars per, I'm not sure if that's the, what they use.
You know, it is strange how it, the way it is calculated by the ITE, because for example, an apartment has less cars associated with it, average daily trips, but a single-family home, a big single-family home, could end up having the most, because you've got the gardeners coming and going, and you, you know, you just think about all the other trips associated with that. But it is strange how they, they come about it, but the higher density has lower trips associated with it than the lower density in some respects.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had a question on this one in regards to how many parcels are actually eligible for ADU in the Ojai region? I'm thinking it's less than 2%, so I'm just wondering, how much is this impact that we're talking about?
That's the interior ADUs?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we, actually, because we didn't look at that and analyze that data, as far as looking for interior, specifically for interior ADUs, we're focusing at, on the minimum parcel size for the attached and non-detached.
Okay, I was just raising if it was 2% and it's 12 cars, you know what I mean? I mean, it, the number that we're talking about is, is very small as to who would actually put them in. So I was just wondering. And then my next question is, you're comparing nine, so your suggestion is 900 square foot, which if you just laid it out, it really isn't that much more. And then you had 12,000, so why didn't you suggest to us 12,000?
1,100.
Or 1,200? Wow, I'm really extrapolating, sorry.
Well, I believe our recommendation leaves it up to the, the, your board to make that choice.
Okay, because I heard you state 900, so I was wondering, what, what is the benefit of doing a 1,200 square foot? It's just?
Yeah, what, later on in the presentation, I mentioned, please identify the desired unit size and minimum parcel size for ADUs in the Ojai traffic.
So there's no, there's no, one, lean us one way or another in 900 versus 1,200?
What you're saying?
Just bedrooms.
The difference between 7 and 1,200, there's no difference, is what you're saying?
Based on, on the information that we have from transportation department, yes.
Okay. We can work from there.
I think the way to say, based on the formula, that you don't, you don't change, you don't change trips based on the size of the unit.
Yes, certainly, this all has to do with the peak hour trips, correct? That's, that's exclusively what it comes down to for the impact area, that's correct, supervisor.
That's a good point.
And also, though, while trips are one issue, number of cars that are being parked on the street is another one, and that, that, you're going to have more cars, more than likely, with the more bedrooms. You know what would also be helpful when this comes back, and as it goes to the planning commission, and hopefully to the MAC, municipal advisory councils, is what are the other cities in the county doing? Because some of these are in very urban areas, and kind of seeing what the cities are doing, I think would be helpful. And I believe our last, before we changed it, what was it, what was our square footage?
For the minimum parcel size, or?
No, the square foot for an accessory dwelling unit.
It depended on the, the size, if I, if I recall, depended on the, the, the actual size of the parcel, so.
Right, exactly. So I knew, I know we had a threshold, if it was over 10,000 or whatever, but it, do you recall the numbers? Was it 650, was that what the, or 900?
I can get that.
Anyway, that information would be helpful in the future, so we understand, because it has worked well, what we had before the state stepped in, and this kind of opens the floodgates for a lot more. So I just, you know, while we have to make some changes to be in accordance with the state, I just want to be careful how we do it. And then, and the square footage increases is one example, so it would be good to know what it was.
Okay, that's well noted.
I, I, yeah, I don't recall from the emergency that it was changed, the 700 square foot was changed, so I think we just kept that one as is.
Within the Ojai impact area, it's, it's been the same.
Yeah, it's been the same.
Yeah, within, it was 700 square feet, so that hasn't changed.
Mm-hmm.
So, because we wanted to use that time, yes.
Exactly, so that's why we didn't change it. So that's why we're coming back to see if now that we understand the impacts, is 900 acceptable, or is it continue at 700? That's my understanding of it.
That's a determination we've got to make.
Okay, just one clarification, I was speaking with my manager, is on the back, we're talking about the garage conversions of ADU, for an ADU for a garage. If that garage is converted, the, the, the parking for the principal dwelling is still required, it's just that it wouldn't be required to have another if, for, for an interior ADU would not require it to have to have a covered parking. So that's, so we want to make clear that if you have an interior ADU inside of a garage, that, that parking's still going to be required for the principal dwelling onsite, it's just that the interior ADU, we cannot require parking spaces for.
So if a house is two, two-car garage, you still have to have a two-car garage?
You still have to have parking for that.
For that, for the principal.
It has to be onsite.
Okay.
When you say covered, that doesn't necessarily mean a garage, is that correct?
Could be a carport.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Going to the next. Your board also has discretion to maintain the one-acre minimum lot size, or to reduce this to encourage construction of ADUs in the Ojai Valley. Reducing the minimum lot size to a 10,000 square foot increases the theoretical percentage of parcels eligible for an ADU within the Ojai traffic impact area from 25% to 64%, which you can see right there on the far right, 25% of the parcels have it set at the 10,000, or rather, one acre larger. And then if we go to the far left, it, more towards the left, you see it's 64% for a 10,000 square foot acre parcel or larger. I want to point out that these numbers are based on GIS analysis only intended to provide a very rough estimate. For example, all assessors' parcels are included in this estimate, but in reality, ADUs are only allowed on one legal lot, which might include multiple assessors' parcels. If your board would like to liberalize ADU regulations in the Ojai traffic impact area, please provide specific direction to planning staff regarding the maximum unit size and minimum parcel size desired. Given the current information, planning staff recommends that your board increase the allowable ADU size in the Ojai traffic impact area, and consider decreasing the required minimum parcel size requirement. And again, we're not require, are specifying any particular size or level.
You show 64% of the parcels are at 10,000 square foot or larger. 10,000 square, fair, square foot, you know, it also depends on where your house is located on the lot, if you can even do an ADU. So I think that percentage is actually high.
It is high.
Because.
It's certainly high.
Because so many of those houses were not built, okay, we're going to put the house all up front, so you have a big backyard.
That's, that's certainly true, and there are, there can be other topographical type of situations where there could be the, on the side of a cliff, you know, it could be a steep slope, or there could be other, you know, oak trees, or all kinds of possibilities that this could, so it tends to really overinflate that number.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, that just because if you stated 10,000 square foot or larger, there's not 64%.
Yeah, or the 14, the 1420, the number, yeah.
Yeah, that number is, is not.
It's way high, yes. We would, we would agree that that is, it, we just, it's the data that's available to us, and that's the reason why we chose that, but we stayed consistent throughout. Okay, moving on now to another item that we're discussing with, regarding the existing impact areas to research, a new impact area. So we're moving on to looking at a new fire hazard impact area. During the March board hearing, in the interim ADU ordinance, your board expressed concerns regarding the construction of new ADUs in neighborhoods with street widths less than 20 feet, limited onsite parking, and resulting potential fire hazard created within these neighborhoods, which are located within a high fire hazard area. Planning staff evaluated areas in the county where the following conditions were present. And I'll just read from the slide here. Neighborhoods that are located within a high or very high fire hazard zone, residential development that can accommodate a new ADU, limited availability of on-street parking, and road segments that are narrow and may not meet county road width standards. The easily identifiable, identifiable areas in the county which met all these criteria included Ventoux Park neighborhood, Santa Susana Knowles, and the Box Canyon community. I'll take you visually through these as we move on to the next slide.
So these are three areas that do meet the high fire hazard restriction?
Yes, they're, they're within, they're within that area, at least partially.
These are new areas that meet it, or these are the areas in Ventura County?
The, these are all within Ventura County.
These are all within, but are these the only areas within Ventura County?
No, it's possible that there could be additional, and then we have, here with us today is our fire marshal, who would be able to discuss some of that detail with you too.
So these are three of the areas?
Yeah, the other three that we were able to, that we know, that we know of, that we were able to go out and visit, take some photos, and just show for, for purposes of that it could be a concern.
It's consideration.
So, so Charles, if we have additional areas in, in the future, then you'll bring that up too?
Yes, certainly. It's, it's not limited to these three areas.
Not limited to the three, yeah.
Not, not, not at all. As I said, there are some other areas, like in Malibu, it's a potential area, there's pockets, and Malibu could be an area of concern as well, as well as a few other areas. And as I said, we have a fire marshal here today, you can discuss that with us if we have more questions.
Because it says here, small pockets of development criteria also include Malibu, Camarillo Heights, and Ojai High areas.
Yeah, women in the board letter.
Also throw in Carlisle Canyon, Malibu certainly, that you had mentioned, Carlisle Canyon, and possibly even Rolling Oaks Estates, where you have the long windy, only one way in and one way out kind of roads.
Okay.
I know there's kind of a partial moratorium already in Carlisle Canyon because of that.
And that's cer, something, certainly if we get direction from your board, is that something we could explore and investigate with the fire marshal?
To identify the additional?
Exactly, exactly, if that's a request of your board.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, yes, first Ventoux Park. This photo was taken by planning staff in May of this year. This photo of the Ventoux Park area illustrates the conditions of concern, narrow streets, existing single-family development, all within a high fire hazard area. Ventoux Park Fire Safe Council coordinates currently with the Ventura County Fire Protection District when the area is threatened by wildfires. On these red flag warning days, the members of the Ventoux Park Fire Safe Council erect advisory signs at strategic points in the neighborhood requesting residents to avoid parking on the streets. This voluntary program, and it is voluntary, is done to provide This voluntary program, and it is voluntary, is done to provide access for fire vehicles in the event of a fire. Using the nine thousand square foot parcel width size standard, two hundred and sixteen parcels are eligible for an ADU in the Ventu Park area. And that would be approximately forty percent of all of the Ventu's ADU eligible parcels. However, I should add that many of the parcels in these communities I'm highlighting here are still using septic systems and made to be too small to accommodate an ADU with an expanded septic system.
And I just have to point out, this is an unusual photo of Ventu Park, because there aren't cars parked all along the sides of the road, and it isn't one of the curvy roads, and it's paved, so it's not typical of that area.
And certainly, absolutely, when we were out there, there were other photos that we were, that we were taking. We captured this photo for, to identify some of the dwellings, the existing dwellings, which are a part of those conditions that we're identifying. There were some other areas, which, absolutely correct, that were much narrower, windier, and certainly could be blocked if somebody were to park out there. We just chose this, as I said, because we saw a nice concentration of dwellings.
And so they would have to redo their septic tank, because you do not want to build a house beyond the limits of the septic tank. It's horrible.
It would be what the environmental health department's requirements, if they required expanded or upgraded their system.
Right.
Okay, the next area is Santa Susana. This is another photo taken by staff, planning staff, on the same day. It includes the conditions of concern that we mentioned before. Approximately half of Santa Susana community is within a very high fire hazard area, the other half of the community is not within any fire hazard area. So I just want to be clear on Santa Susana, half of it is, half of it isn't. No parking signs, and were observed by planning staff on some of the roads out in that community. Using a nine thousand square foot minimum parcel size standard, three hundred and thirty parcels are eligible for an ADU. Okay, and this is Box Canyon. It is located entirely within a very high fire hazard area. If we were to use the nine thousand square foot minimum parcel size for Box Canyon, ninety-four parcels would be eligible for an ADU. If your board approved creation of a fire hazard impact area, the intent would be to create reasonable development standards that address specific issues, such as requiring adequate onsite parking. This would be done in coordination with fire district staff. There may be other smaller pockets, which we alluded to before. If directed by your board, planning staff would coordinate with the fire district staff, including the fire marshal, to determine the boundaries for areas that meet the criteria for inclusion in a fire hazard impact area, a new fire hazard impact area. And again, not being limited or excluding, or just including only these three places, or it could be other places as well.
Charles?
So if, so if we chose the option that in the high fire hazard impact areas, we were not going to increase the ADUs, there you would, the state law would still permit internal ADUs to be developed in these areas?
That's correct.
So you could have internal ADUs developed in these areas now with the more liberal state standards?
That's correct. The way the state law is written currently, we do not see that, in our conversation with county council, and also in looking carefully at the law, we do not see that there's any way that we could require, even in a fire hazard impact area.
Okay, thank you.
And how about the attached? Can you?
The attached.
Attached, yeah.
Yeah, the attached would be subject to regulations.
Okay.
County, local regulations.
And you know, when you first put this up, I thought this is a section of Lake Sherwood Drive, the public portion, you know, because that gets windy, and then I just start thinking, these standards may need to get down to specific what road widths we're talking about, and because it could be in one small section of an area and not in another, so it may not be able to just do it by an entire community, or in addition to doing it by entire community, have it also be really specific on what kind of street sections that they would be a potential fire hazard.
So if I understand you, rather than it being a specific designated area, it could be, say, streets that were.
You could end up in those situations, and I can think of some of these streets that look like that in different areas of the community, but certainly incorporating, like all of Ventu Park, you know, I think that's appropriate, and some of the Santa Susana Knolls, but there are also other sections here and there throughout our county that, you know, there isn't any street parking, and it is narrow, and it has potential fire hazards too.
Blocking that access, yeah.
I would agree that that would be better than restricting all the neighborhood, like you stated, there was a fifty-fifty. Part of it is in the high fire, and part of it is not, so then you're going to hold everyone that's not, they can't do it. So we, I think we just have to look at it, there has to be a balance.
Okay, noted. As I mentioned before, our county fire marshal is here today to answer any questions that you may have, specific questions to, for his expertise. Planning staff recommends that a new fire hazard impact area with the development standards be prepared for your board's consideration. Okay, that covers the first two issues that were questioned your board's direction on. Now on to the minimum parcel lot size requirements. One of the provisions included in the county's ADU interim ordinance was a reduction in the minimum parcel size for ADUs from ten thousand square feet to nine thousand square feet. State law does not identify a minimum lot size for ADUs, so the number can be set by your board at any level that is not considered so burdensome that it would restrict the construction of ADUs throughout the county. At your March hearing, your board requested that planning division staff evaluate a smaller minimum lot size and bring this back to your board. One of the questions raised at the last hearing was whether particular communities would be affected by reducing the minimum lot size. In order to provide you with more information on this, staff prepared a rough estimate, again, very rough estimates, as you were identifying before, that could accommodate or potentially accommodate ADUs based on different parcel size. So this is the first, and again, it's similar to that earlier table that we had for the Ojai traffic impact area, we're looking at potential, and this one, the row is really just looking at countywide, looking at potentially what could be, what would be available, or potentially available for an ADU.
So Charles?
Yeah.
It's twenty-one thousand, I can't see.
And fifty, yeah.
Six thousand square foot lots in the whole area?
Yeah, that would be for the.
For the entire.
So that would be, if that was what your board would choose, what we would see potentially, again, it's an inflated number, it's a higher number, but what we would see, but you can see the difference in looking at eighty-two percent versus the sixty-five percent. So it's almost a twenty percent difference countywide that we'd be looking at. So in terms of if we were to have nine thousand versus the six thousand.
And I know that in the discussion on the emergency ordinance, I was pushing for the eight thousand square foot. It's interesting to see there's a very slight difference between the nine thousand and ten thousand, and the eight was based off the state.
Go ahead, answer the question.
Yeah, certainly, as you, as you start slicing it by a thousand, thousand square feet, it becomes smaller and smaller, the difference is, so, but that is certainly, again, if directed by your board, if that was another parcel size, minimum parcel size that we want us to evaluate and bring back to your board.
No, I just wanted to remind those of the conversation we had past.
I understand.
Supervisor, a bit.
Yeah, question for county council and for planning staff, and that is, if we, for minimum of lot size, can we vary that by different areas in the county? So can we say in a certain area, we're going to have the minimum lot size be six thousand, and in another area, it's going to stay at nine thousand?
Yes, you can, you can make a differentiation by area.
Great, that's a question I had, you know, because we, in El Rio, we have one thousand six hundred and fifty, six thousand foot, you know, that's ninety percent. So the question is, you know, can we parcel that out? Can we call it an impacted area, whatever you want to call it, and look at that and see, can we add another unit, or does it have to be attached or detached and so forth? And looking at your, at your attached, somebody that has a home there, if we do go to six thousand, they can add fifty percent to that house, to the existing house or structure.
Well, if I understand your question, it would be that if they were, all these, the minimum parcel size only affects attached and detached. So those interior ADUs, we cannot regulate by the minimum parcel size. So as county council was saying, is it doesn't appear that there would be, you know, anything that would restricting us if we wanted to identify certain areas. We'd have to take a look at that. I know how it's, it's done in the coastal zoning ordinance, where it's based on the minimum parcel size based on the particular zone. So you have different zones in the coastal, open space, residential beach, you know, rural, and those zones have different minimum parcel sizes, and that's what's used as determining whether an ADU can be built, constructed in the coastal zone.
I would like to see that El Rio, down north of the area, designated for, to see, to study it, to see what we can do with a six thousand square foot lot. I think it's important to do that, because the only concern that I would have there in El Rio is the water pressure, but that comes later, you know, because that's another concern that we have, but I really would like to see that, because we've got ninety percent of the homes are, or lots are, are six thousand or so. So I really would like to see that.
Okay, well, thank you for noting that, we'll definitely look into that.
Right, and I'm not opposed to the six thousand, because so many of the percentage, you couldn't do what you wanted to do on those houses to begin with. So giving a little bit more opportunity is good, and I think that would work really well for that area as well.
Yeah, okay.
And just, I'll briefly, again, repeat what I mentioned before about the rough estimates. While analysis provided, this provides a theoretical estimate of the number of parcels that could accommodate ADUs, the number is considered to be significantly inflated due to the number of reasons that were mentioned, not only in the board, but that I mentioned, in the board letter, but that I also mentioned earlier in the presentation. Generally, the table shows that the number and percentage of the ADU eligible parcels in the non-coastal, residential, open space, and agricultural zones, for comparison purposes, the estimated number of potential ADUs is calculated using the minimum parcel size categories, which we discussed before. Not surprisingly, is that as you go down, the minimum parcel size goes down, the number of eligible units goes up. Just as a reminder, again, that these interior ADUs are not subject to these minimum parcel size standards. Okay, this is looking at, looking at the, some existing communities. This table shows a rough estimate of parcels that would be eligible in some of the county's existing communities. However, it's fair to say that when looking at the smaller lot sizes, these lots are less likely, less likely to have development capacity for ADUs because of their size and the required development standards, such as setbacks, et cetera, for the attached and detached ADUs. Areas on septic in particular will have a much harder time adding an ADU due to the environmental health requirements for an upgraded or expanded septic system. In many cases, they simply won't fit on most of the six to seven thousand square foot lots. But they possibly could fit on, you know, but tend upon the standards on seven thousand or more, so.
Because El Rio, El Rio has sewers. We've got sewers around El Rio.
Yeah, right, but I'm just, just explaining that. Okay. So, and again, what you do see is what Supervisor was mentioning, you see the big jumps between the nine thousand to the six thousand. Goes from, for instance, for Ventu Park, it goes from forty percent eligible to, all the way up to eighty-three percent eligible, and so on down the road. The next is looking at area plan. Again, it's the same, same kind of, same kind of theme, same kind of trend. Shows the estimates for the coastal area, for the county's area plans, not coastal, the county's area plans. You'll notice that Saticoy area plan has its own unique minimum parcel size of eight thousand square feet. This is a map that provides more of a visual representation of what we were discussing earlier as far as the, what was in the table. This map may be difficult to see, but it allows ADU eligible parcels from, for, in the six thousand to nine thousand square foot category, shown in red, and you can see it in some of the places, like Oak Park, out to the east, let's see what's showing up the most there, and also looking at some of the, to the far, get the pointer to work, is out here, out in the Santa Susana area, and then, of course, when the, let's see the also Camrio Heights area, and Casa Cano area also as well. So you can see that in these red areas, that that's showing sort of where these concentrations are, and certainly if the, if it was, if the six thousand square foot minimum parcel is not selected, then those red areas would no longer be available options in the county. The areas outlined in the navy blue are the impact areas, and of course, the, to the left, upper left, mostly looking like white, is the Ojai traffic impact area, and then the blue would be the groundwater quality impact area. And the minimum parcel size requirement for the, currently for the groundwater quality impact area is four point three two acres. In general, the areas I mentioned, as I mentioned before, with the smaller parcel sizes, were the Oak Park, where it had these smaller parcel sizes, and the number we're looking at, the six to nine thousand for that smaller number, would be the Oak Park, Ventu Park, Casa Cano, Box Canyon, Santa Susana. And then on the west side of the county, we'd be looking more at, that had this, a little more concentrations of the six to thousand, six to nine thousand square foot concentration, we'd be looking more over here at the North Ventura Avenue area plan, there's some in there, and then right up Highway thirty-three, Casita Springs, Oak View, Myers Oaks, the rest, going up in that area, we see a concentration. The green areas are pretty hard to see on the map, they, that's the nine to ten thousand square foot, and one of the reasons why it is so hard to see is because that's such a small sliver of category that we're looking at. And those, we see those in the Camrio Heights area, you can see that on the map, also along Highway thirty-three, and in the Pyro area. So we'll, we'll take a look now at some of the, a couple of specific examples from this map, we'll zoom in here a little bit. This map of the Thousand Oaks area plan shows parcels greater than nine thousand square feet in blue and yellow. These areas are the parcels that allow an ADU using today's regulations. Parcels that would be eligible for an ADU if your board lowers the size to six thousand square feet are shown in burgundy, so you can see those all in red. So using this, if we look at the Casa Cano area, where's, which is showing most, there we go, most of the red here, if the, was increased, if it, we would, if be set at nine thousand square feet, ninety-nine percent of all the parcels would be eligible in, for ADUs in Casa Cano. So that's a particular area where a lot of lots are obviously just below that nine thousand square foot minimum parcel size, because if it was kept at nine thousand square feet, then the percentage of eligible parcels would be twenty-five percent. So you can see a big difference there. So it's essentially like looking at as if you kept it at nine thousand square feet, all those red burgundy would just go away.
And, when you're looking at this area, the yellow is the one that's over ten thousand square feet?
Yes, it is.
So in Casa Cano, which is an urban area, basically, it's just like all the other urban areas in Thousand Oaks for the most part, just the areas in yellow would be the ones that are ten thousand feet, that would be allowed, not, none of the others, but as you look across the map, it looks like Lynn Ranch, every home there could have a second dwelling unit.
The, for the previous map?
No, the one that you're looking at, there's a big splotch of yellow over on the right corner, that's all Lynn Ranch, I think, and so.
Yes.
The entire community of Lynn Ranch, every single house there could have an accessory dwelling unit.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Assuming other developmental standards, or development standards were met, but yes.
They qualify for that.
Okay, looking, now we're going to El Rio, and in El Rio, you see that most of the parcels are already, would allow an ADU, theoretically would allow an ADU. These are shown in the blue and the yellow, but as Supervisor Zaragoza was mentioning, there's still a patch there that's less than nine thousand, that's between the six to nine thousand square foot area or size, that would allow, if, would be allowed ADUs if the minimum parcel size was dropped to six thousand.
So we can look at that in the future, see what?
Yes, we'll make a note of that.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Strickland up there too, by Central is also eligible for that.
Good.
Okay.
I appreciate these graphics too, it really helps us understand the areas and what we're really talking about.
And it, and it does demonstrate that the vast majority of the land is already, for example, in El Rio, already ten thousand, just like we saw in Lynn Ranch, you've got large areas that you can get a lot of second dwelling units built in with the current.
And Charles, we also have some, I can see down in Nyland, there's a couple of.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, down, let me get that, just in case, down in this area, yeah, down in this area.
It is really helpful. Could you address, for example, Lynn? It is really helpful. Could you address, for example, Lynn Ranch has a homeowner's association, property owners' association, how that interplays with this? Do they have any say?
The HOAs?
Right.
The last time I checked, we had asked the housing, housing, state housing and community development agency on that, and they had not, last time I had discussed that with them, they had not had a decision on that. We're waiting for a memo from the housing and community development on that, on that particular item, as well as some other items they've not yet addressed.
It would be helpful that if we had that information, again, when it, by the time it comes through the planning commission back to the board, not only, you know, the issue about the Homer Association's input in some of these, because they may have certain restrictions on sizes of things too, but also the, as I was saying, it would be wonderful if you could bring it to the municipal advisory councils so that they could weigh in also.
We, we certainly plan to bring them and offer it to the, to the MACs.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the last one here, it's, it's the same, same theme. This is the North Ventura Avenue area plan, which is, as you can see, it's the same kind of graphic. We have the yellow showing all the areas where they can currently be built, and some of that, that blue as well, which is a little more difficult to see. But then, and then if it was reduced down to 6,000, it would be in the burgundy. A point about all this information, there's a lot of information I know we're throwing at you, is that in pure numbers, there's not much difference between the 9,000 to 10,000 square foot, as pointed out by the supervisor, but reduction to 6,000 square feet does increase the number of ADU eligible parcels substantially to some communities like Casa Cano, El Rio, North Ventura Avenue and Oak Park. Okay. Please indicate whether your board prefers to maintain the 9,000 square foot minimum parcel size or to set a new minimum parcel size for ADUs located within the non-impact areas.
So, so if we maintain the, the 9,000, we can again, look at El Rio and those other sections that we mentioned again, you know, so we can.
Yeah, certainly, if, you know, directed by us, that is something.
Yeah, that, I would like to see that.
Yeah. Though, as you saw, if we went to 10,000, almost everything in El Rio would be able to have an ADU anyways.
But we, we'll look at the area there, because that's 1,900, 1,900 parcels.
It also brings to the forefront, while we see how much area could allow for ADUs, how important it is, I think, then to look at the size of those, you know, to see if you're going to have multiple bedrooms and, because that really compounds the impact.
And one of the reasons, one of the concerns that I have too is that we need quite a bit of affordable housing, you know, and right now we have a lack of affordable housing and that might help us with that too, you know, in, in that, in that impact, that area.
Certainly was the intent behind the state law.
Exactly right. Yeah.
Well, and if I can make a note, I'm, I'm actually for the 6,000 square foot and because of the rules and regulations, there are certain things that you cannot do. I know many of the families that are, are struggling and purchase the smallest home that they possibly can so that they can survive and still have a house over their head. So if there was any way to get an extra bedroom so then the kids aren't all sharing and they're doing things, I think that's a great thing. And I'm trying to, try to take some of the stresses out of our families, especially with the housing. So that's just my input. And that's why I pushed even for the 9,000, just to get 3%. And you won't believe how many phone calls I got. That was just, thank you very much. They were just at 9,800 square foot and the 10,000 was, they couldn't do it. So I just want you to think about that because it's not just, oh, well, this size or whatever, but it's the families inside those homes and why are they building? And so to me, with the housing and friends that I have, they would provide, provide support for them, any type of rules and regulations so that they can make their lives a little bit easier would be great. And I, I know they don't want traffic. We all know that. And we all want to be safe and make sure the fire hazards are taken care of and, and that we build smart, but also just to keep that as, in the back of your head. So I would appreciate.
Okay. Thank you. As we discussed earlier about interior ADUs, these are the ones that can be converted of existing space in a home or accessory structure are not subject to the county's development standards, as we mentioned before. In simple terms, this means that applicants wanting to convert an attached, an existing detached workshop, for instance, to an ADU can bypass planning completely and get a building permit for their ADU. This means that they wouldn't have to meet the front setbacks, minimum unit size, et cetera. Given the rural nature of unincorporated areas, this creates the potential for interior ADUs to be created within existing relatively large detached accessory structures such as barns. Such interior ADUs could exceed the 1,800 square foot limit that we currently have for ADUs. This issue was addressed in the AD, in the interim ADU ordinance by placing a constructed by date in the ordinance for detached accessory structures to be converted. Since that time, the planning staff has informed, has been informed by the state housing and community development department that their opinion is that such provision is in conflict with the state law. The county was not the only jurisdiction to add the provision to set a constructed by date for accessory structures, which is what we have in our current interim ordinance. However, it's our understanding that the housing and community development staff are preparing this guidance memo that I referred to earlier, will go out to local jurisdiction, jurisdictions covering the issue and other ADU issues before the end of the year. In light of this fact, planning staff recommends addressing this issue in a different manner. Specifically, we recommend allowing interior conversions within the primary, our principal dwelling unit to bypass planning within, to buy, but to require conversions of detached structures in the open space and agricultural zones to get a zoning clearance. In no way would this prohibit the ADUs in these zones. So in other words, just where we would be looking at are those zones, the open space and agricultural zones, because those are not specifically single-family residential zones, which is what the state law requires for the interior ADUs to be built, because or not, we're saying, because of this concern that some of these detached larger structures like barns could be built 2,000 square feet or even larger, it could even be larger than the principal dwelling, we're, we're recommending or suggesting that these, those areas be, or those particular zones be where the planning department can regulate the, by development standards, the ADUs. In many ways, the open space and agricultural zone parcels are ideal for accessory dwelling units due to their larger size and distance from neighbors compared to other zones. However, the conversion of these, of these detached structures poses some unique problems. And that's why we believe that people who apply for those, from these, for these detached in those zones, open space and agricultural zones, be required to obtain a zoning clearance and be subject to reasonable development standards. Planning staff recommends that your board direct planning to set development standards for interior ADUs that result from the conversion of detached accessory structures in the open space and agricultural zones. Okay. Now on to the coastal zoning ordinance. Now I'm going to cover the last issue before your board today.
Can I, can I ask a question on that one?
Yes.
So the barn, if they build a barn, they've already gotten the zoning and all that stuff done, right? So it's set back from the house, it's not, it's not by the property, you've got your fire hazards, you're doing all that. So we're asking them to get another one?
If they would convert that barn that, that was processed and they had a permit for on a legal lot, if they had that, they would need one to convert that into an ADU, accessory dwelling unit.
And, okay.
Yeah, but, but that.
Different than in a residential area?
No, it would be the same, it would be the same standard. It would just be that right now, if, if somebody had a, let's say a 1,500 square foot, I'm trying to imagine this possibility, a 1,500 square foot detached structure in a residential zone.
Uh huh.
And they wanted to put a ADU within that, they would be allowed by state law. We could not prohibit that. But in the open space and the agricultural zones, because those are not specifically single-family residential zones, which is the law, which was the state law requires for these interior ADUs, because it's not that, it becomes a zone that could be regulated by county standards. So what we would say in those, at that same 1,500 square foot, in the open space, we would say, well, it exceeds 1,200 square feet. So you could, you could, it would have to be 1,200 square feet and not the 1,500.
So why didn't state law cover that? Or did they choose not to for a reason?
The, I think this, this, what we understand is the state laws, they're, they're looking at residential areas and the law was really specific that it was going to be for those interior ADUs, was going, were going to be for single-family residential zones and would be where there is an existing single-family dwelling. It seems based on that, that we're really limited to just being able to focus on those zones. Historically, the county has allowed accessory dwelling units in open space and agricultural zones. So we're saying, we're, we're taking a middle position on this and saying, okay, well, the state, we can go more liberal than what the state law allows. But at the same time, we also want to have reasonable requirements that we don't end up with 2,000 square foot ADUs, which we don't see as the intent behind the state law or our own zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Certainly, the idea here is you want residents in single-family residence zoning areas. You're not trying to, you're not trying to do some dramatic increase in the amount of residents in the open space and agricultural areas.
The, we see that, that those zones are not primarily single-family residential.
Also, we have allowed for greater ability to build farmworker housing on open space and agricultural properties in detached dwelling units, correct? We have made exceptions for that, particularly in the spheres of influence.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Farmworker housing. We've made it streamlined in essence. We've allowed for
Yes.
it to be built in those two general plan categories of open space and agriculture.
Yes.
So we already have opened up, as you were,
This is true.
the ability to build farmworker housing on these properties. And I kind of like that drift, to, to continue to, to encourage that as opposed to adding granny flats and other things.
That it continued with the farmworker dwelling units and.
Mm-hmm. That, I think that's a good encouragement.
So would you see them using a barn for farmworker housing?
We, alls I'm saying is, we have already, forget about this law here that's before us, we already have something on the books to address adding residential, essentially housing on these lots that aren't really set aside for residential because we really want to get farmworker housing. So I feel like we've addressed that already in some aspect. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Charles.
Okay. All right. Okay, coastal zoning ordinance. The interim ADU ordinance does not address, did not address coastal zoning ordinance amendments because of, at that time, the Coastal Commission had not completed its review of the new ADU law. Because both the Coastal Act and the ADU, ADU law are state laws, it was unclear whether one preempted the other. A memo from the Coastal Commission was released, was released this spring after the, the meetings and the hearings for the interim ordinance, which provides guidance to local jurisdictions. The memo walks a fine line between stating that the new state ADU law does not nullify existing coastal ADU regulations, but strongly recommends that local governments amend their coastal ADU regulations in light of the new legislation. That said, county council believes we should amend our coastal zoning ordinance to comply with the new state law.
So, Charles, I was looking at that, and I think I'm looking more at the coastal zone, option one, you know, to, to amend it accordingly, you know, within compliance with the Coastal Commission, as opposed to do a comprehensive amendment of the whole coastal zoning ordinance. So I think probably option one might be the most feasible, I think, at this time.
Yeah, for, for the coastal, yeah.
And, and currently, that is actually what our, our staff recommend.
Okay.
Is the option one. We wanted to provide both options, but, but it does appear that the option one would make more sense.
Option one makes, makes more sense, you know, I think. Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, we talked, the other option that Supervisor Zaragoza was mentioning, not only as would be that we would amend it, our, the coastal ordinance to be compliant with the state law, but the other option would be, just for the record, to direct staff to comprehensively amend the coastal zoning ordinance to look, to make it more consistent with the non-coastal zoning ordinance. Both options would require the certification by the Coastal Commission, which would extend the processing time for the project by approximately three months to late May 2018.
Okay.
Continuing on with coastal is that planning staff has not completed an exhaustive review of the, of the coastal zoning ordinance to identify non-compliant sections. But to give you a flavor, there are a few examples of where it is not compliant. The intent here would be to make the minimum number of revisions needed, as Supervisor Zaragoza was mentioning, needed to be compliant with state law. So you can see, for instance, that the CZO prohibits conversion of garage spaces for other uses, or, I'm sorry, the coastal zoning ordinance, sorry for the acronyms, is that prohibits conversion of garage spaces for other uses, but the state law allows obviously for the conversion of garage.
That sounds conflicting. It's a little conflicting.
And then the, the.
We don't, we don't, we don't allow it now, but the state allows it.
Yes.
Under the ADU. Okay.
Exactly.
We'll allow it.
Exactly. And this is one of the areas that we would see, does give us a reason to consider amending our CZO, our coastal zoning ordinance.
Option one.
The coastal zoning is requires also, another example of non-compliance, is requires discretionary permits for state mandated interior ADUs. That's what our coastal ordinance requires currently, is that there has to be these discretionary permits. But the state ADU law requires only ministerial approval. Planning staff has not completed an exhaustive review, as I mentioned before, but it just gives you just sort of a flavor of it.
Do we have a recommendation whether we go discretionary or ministerial?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a recommendation whether to go discretionary or ministerial?
Well, what we would do is we would want to make it compliant for those interior ADUs. We would want, we would request, and that would be part of our conversations that we would have with the planning, or rather, with the Coastal Commission.
That way you can expedite the process.
Exactly. We would, we would hope so. That's what we're shooting for.
Okay. Thank you.
And just again, for the record, please, in the direction of the options would be, okay, on the next. Okay. So in this case, what we'd be looking at, this would be if there would be, if you wanted to consider a more comprehensive example, is to show differences between the ADU, for instance, in the coastal zone, it's the maximum unit size allowed is 700 square feet. This is allowed by state, the state law allows it, but it's not consistent with what we're considering in, currently in the non-coastal zoning ordinance. So that would be the other, again, just looking at if we wanted to make it also be consistent with the coastal zoning ordinance, consistent with the non-coastal zoning ordinance. And then in the, in another example, minimum lot sizes are set by zoning in the coastal zone and not by the overall minimum lot size standard, which is what is used currently at 9,000 square feet for most areas of the, of the non-coastal zone.
So this is all done by zoning, not?
Yes. So the coastal zoning is based on that. So for instance, in the, the residential beach harbor zone down at the beach, they have a minimum parcel size required for that zone, residential beach harbor, for 1,750 square feet.
That's right.
So it's that low. Of course, they would have a lot of, because the parcel's so small, they would have difficulty in terms of just practical reasons trying to get it in.
That's why the zoning is so important. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So, but that would, of course, that would make it much, that much more difficult to make the coastal zone, coastal zoning ordinance consistent with our non-coastal ordinance to try to change those different minimum standards.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I think we worked on that. Option one. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, number one, and now one, Charlie.
Okay. So please, the same thing, please provide direction. So to the board, so you both see. So I would actually ask how we want to, to do this, we were looking to try to talk to management and to council. If, as we go on to the next, we, we heard what, what you would like to do on that.
Supervisor Bennett, you had a question? Go ahead.
Okay. So we have that, actually, before I get, I'm, I'm jumping ahead of myself here. Let's, let's focus on the, the next.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My bad. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So what we're looking at now is our project timeline. And one- The timeline shown here provides an overview of the project timeline. We have a small window to draft the new regulations and begin our public outreach. Public outreach meetings will be held in the fall, and our current plan is to reach out to those counties, seven max, to find out how, what they would, if they would like a staff presentation. In order to meet our March deadline, these presentations would have to occur sometime between late October and early December. In checking the MAC schedules for that period, it appears that all of them would be meeting during that time.
And Charles, so, the MACs have to be, we have to have a MAC meeting between October and December, you said?
Well, that would be the timeline we're looking at, sometime October and December. That would give us enough chance to prepare the ADU regulations, a draft.
And you'll make the presentation to the MACs, or...
Yes, well, we would invite them. We're planning on, our thought is to have them come, actually, here, maybe to the West County and then to the East County, and then we would maybe have them and then do a single presentation.
Because we have, we have two MAC meetings, October and November, because we're dark in December, so, it's got to be October, November timeframe.
And I don't see the MAC members coming here during the day, you know, the people work and all, so...
They'll probably attend there.
That we can get out into the communities would be the better way of doing it.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, and that's why I was concerned on this issue, because Supervisor Foy was in here and Kim Pearlheart, the director, was in here in case we had additional questions or concerns, but then when I asked my questions, it was definitely because of the timeline to make sure that we reached the community, and I appreciate that, even pushing back just a little to say, hey, look, we really want to make sure we reach out to our community and give them the choice to make their comments so we can make a better ordinance, I think is great.
I think our only concern is that we're just running up against a deadline, that the interim ordinance expires, and then we would be left without, and then non-compliant with the state law, so...
Right.
So, that's just what we're, we're just looking at a realistic timeframe, so, but...
Okay.
Okay, our plan would be for, on January 11th, to have the Planning Commission hearing to consider and act on the proposed ordinance amendments at that time, and then bring, come back to your board on February 27th, 2018, after the Planning Commission has forwarded the resolution. Also mentioned, I mentioned earlier before about the coastal zoning ordinance amendments, that those, we'd be looking at, those would be reviewed and considered by, we're thinking approximately May 2018. And so, here, this is a review of all the recommended actions of those five issues that we started at the meeting with, and in those meeting, in those issues, you can see here, rather than me reading through all of them, is that we talked about them before. We recommend that you take the recommended actions on page one of your board letter. In particular, staff seek direction today on the five issues listed here on this slide, as well as on the next slide, and this is all contained, of course, within your board letter.
Yeah, are you done now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I do have one speaker, Sean Porowski. Sean?
I like those mini houses. They're cute. Less to clean.
Good morning, board members. My name is Sean Porowski from Ventura County Collab, and we wanted to thank staff for their hard work in putting together this report and for their diligence and their effort to bring the county's ADU ordinance in line with state law. We would like to bring up a few points for your consideration as you look at adopting the permanent ADU ordinance. First, while staff helpfully provided a number of scenarios for minimum lot sizes for ADUs, we support keeping the minimum lot size at its current 9,000 square feet. This was a reasonable compromise reached by the board back in March, and the numbers presented by staff do not indicate that it will result in an unreasonably large increase in the number of ADUs in the county. We also agree with staff's suggestion that the board should lower the minimum parcel size and increase the maximum ADU unit size in the Ojai traffic impact area. Second, we agree that reasonable regulations can be added to handle interior ADUs and accessory structures in OS and AE zones. To address staff's concerns that abnormally large ADUs could be built inside barns, we suggest taking a cue from the development standards for ADUs found in AB 2299 and limit the ADU size to 50% of the existing living area or 1,200 square feet, whichever is greater. This will prevent the scenario discussed in the staff report of interior ADUs exceeding the maximum square footage limits and prevent it from exceeding the size of the existing dwelling unit. In addition, the county should create setback requirements for interior ADUs and accessory structures in a way that meets the safety requirements while taking care not to unduly burden the development of new ADUs. Given the board's discussion of farmworker housing, I wanted to emphasize that not every parcel in OS, in the agriculture, or the, in the open space zones, is a farm that needs farmworker housing, ADUs are for those landowners who want additional housing options but don't operate traditional farms. Finally, we disagree with staff's recommendation of the creation of a new fire hazard impact area. In the discussion of the Ojai traffic impact area, staff showed that an extremely low percentage of all parcels in that area that were eligible to build ADUs from 2007 to 2016 actually did so. If we extrapolate that rate to the area's name to justify the fire hazard impact area, then we would expect to see four ADUs in Vento Park, six in Santa Susana Nodles, and two ADUs in Box Canyon. This is simply not a large enough number of vehicles to justify a fire hazard impact area. It is a vanishingly small number of vehicles, given the size of these areas and the number of people living there. Rather than tackling the complex approach of creating a new zoning overlay for these areas, a better approach would be to examine street parking policies in these areas to see if they already address the concerns laid out in the staff report. Fixing the street parking policies themselves would probably do much better to solve these potential access problems for fire trucks and the fire safety issues than limiting ADU development in these areas. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers on this item?
I have another question for staff, if I can. Is there anything that will prohibit the owners, after building one of these, of turning it into a vacation rental?
Planning staff does not plan to put in the regulations that they could use as a short-term rental.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Chair Zeragosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers. For the record, I'm Tricia Meyer of the Resource Management Agency Planning Division. I just wanted to comment for a moment on that question. That would be, I believe, written into the short-term rental ordinance, so that's, that's one of their, the regulations, at least the draft that I've seen, included a provision to that effect.
Ms. Myers?
Yeah, while you're up, I, excuse me, save me calling you up later. Number one, I appreciate that response, and, you know, we've got the whole thing of short-term rentals, and how do you enforce it will be a real challenge. I mean, if these things get built, if we say, hey, this unit built under these conditions can't be a short-term vacation rental, but that unit can, I think, I see Mr. Stevens nodding his head, it would be an interesting challenge, right? So, anyway, but this is a, this is a pretty complex series of things for us to try to decide today, and I appreciate that we're on a short timeframe in terms of doing that. But did this all get vetted through our normal, you know, series process in terms of a couple weeks, good advance notice, it had to go to county council, and had to go to CEO and all that other stuff?
Chair Zeragosa, Supervisor Bennett, yes, this went through our standard process of, we meet as a management team and we review new regulations and proposed policy. It went several times to our planning managers. It was reviewed by county council. There were some last-minute changes, and I do apologize to your board for the volume of information that you were asked to absorb in a short period of time. That just was the reality we had.
So, my office made a request on Monday that the Board of Supervisors get this in advance, and we didn't get any response from you about that, and can you tell us what your, why we couldn't, if this was out there, why we couldn't have seen it sooner than the release on Thursday?
Chair Zeragosa, Supervisor Bennett, the reality was that we weren't finished with this until Thursday morning of last week, so that, you know, there were changes that were, significant changes that were still being made, and we were receiving county council review on Wednesday of last week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? What's a pleasure of the board?
I have, I have some thoughts, and like I said, this is complicated, and we've spent, you know, we've been, we've been working hard on this, and I appreciate that it's been complicated for planning staff also in terms of trying to get it out there, but, so everybody's going to do the best that they can. So, I have some recommendations, and I want to modify them some based on the testimony that we heard here, but I'm going to read this out loud, and I've already given it to staff, so that they at least, you can see it typed up and stuff, but this is, this is my thought. One, with regards to the common sense view on the traffic impact area, I just think you have to say that a three-bedroom place is more likely to generate more traffic than a, than a one-bedroom place, and so I think you just want to proceed cautiously in the traffic impact area. And so, this is what, I appreciate staff's recommendation that we should make some modifications. This is the modification that I think we should study to take to our MACs and have our community give us input, because we have to remember, we're not, we're doing this without very much community input at all. I mean, this thing just came up and all that, but I would, for the traffic impact area, basically the Ojai Valley, take a look at 1,200 square-foot units on the one acre or larger lots, and 900 square-foot units on lots of 20,000 square feet or larger. All right, so that's a significant modification in terms of the Ojai Valley. In terms of the fire hazard area, I'm of, I have two thoughts here, but one would be simply, if these are fire, you know, we constantly, when we have a bad fire, we have a bad disaster anywhere, what's the first thing people say? Why did you allow them to build there in the first place? That's what we constantly get asked, and I just think that the amount of area we have that we're talking about in the fire hazard area is not so large that, that it's, I, by the way, I want to emphasize, I support the concept, what the state's trying to do with this, which is trying to find a way to get more affordable housing out there, and using this as a process to do that, I support that. And so, I'm trying to find a way to do that here in Ventura County and not have unintended impacts. So, in the fire hazard area, I would be fine saying, let's just skip the fire hazard areas, let's just go, we're not going to have this happen in the fire hazard area. If the board didn't go that direction, then I'd say establish appropriate development standards proposed by staff, but you'd have to consider larger minimum lot sizes so that you could handle the issue of parking, because parking is a big issue for the, you know, for the fire thing in terms of the trucks getting through there and, and all of that. So, I think that's where I would go with that. In terms of the county-wide minimum lot size, this is the one that, I appreciate the answer from county council, the, I want to be, I want to be sensitive, we've got a supervisor here that wants to go to 6,000, I think Supervisor Parks...
I'd like you 12,000, 20,000.
But 10,000, yeah, but 10,000, I, I am, I am fine with the 9,000, I could go to the 6,000 in the North Ventura area. So, what I would like to say is that we go to, we have staff examine going to 6,000 square feet in the El Rio and...
Del Norte.
And Nylund Acres?
Del Norte area, huh? That covers El Rio, Del Norte.
The El Rio and Del Norte area. I don't know how you'd like to word it for the 10,000, what area you want to make that to, you want to try your hand at that?
Right. Well, I think that we could do 10,000 across the board and pull out those areas like El Rio that you want 6,000, that's how I would look at it.
Okay.
I agree on that. 9,000, if you have at least 3,000, 3% of that are all 10,000.
I think that there's a reason to be changing, thank you, sorry, the 9,000. I do like the 6,000 even more, but my push would be on keeping it at the 9,000 and at least increasing it to 6,000 in some areas, if not all.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Yep.
So, Supervisor Parks, if you want to go to, if you want to change it county-wide to 10, I could do that. I would then say, in the North Ventura area, I would be willing to look at the 6,000 also, because it's just a few parcels there in that North Ventura area. So, in North Ventura and in the areas that Supervisor Zeragosa talked about, and then interior ADUs in open space and ag zones, I certainly don't support the concept that was presented by Mr. Porowski, I believe, where he said, not whichever is greater, because if you have a large lot, I mean, if you have a large house, you have a 5,000 square-foot house, you could have a 2,500 square-foot, you know, unit there if you, if you want that. So, I certainly support directing staff to establish standards for interior ADUs in the open space and ag zones, particularly for protection of water quality and traffic impact areas. And certainly, I would want in the, in the water quality areas, Santa Rosa, and in the traffic impact area, I'd want to make sure that there was significant protection there, but direct staff for those interior ADUs. I certainly don't think that in the open space and ag areas, that that's where we're trying to say we want to facilitate large units or even large numbers of units. That's what we're trying to do in the residential areas. That's why I'm willing in the North Ventura area to go to 6,000. That's why, you know, when somebody's, in the residential areas, yes, but not in the open space and ag area. And then I think we've already all agreed on the coastal zone, direct staff to proceed with option one for how to handle the coastal zone. So, those are the five requested areas. That's my thinking, that's the motion that I was making, needs to be slightly modified, but at least you've got the bulk of it typed up, all right?
And I would throw in Oak Park and Thousand Oaks, 10,000 acre, 10,000 square-foot lots, and it does make a difference, and it would be more consistent with the areas around it. And additionally, I would like to look at, and I think the fire department will, as I mentioned, adding Carlisle Canyon, Malibu, as you are looking at it, but also Rolling Oaks Estates, again, just real narrow roads, and even that one stretch, there's a couple very narrow windy roads in Lake Sherwood that also would not be appropriate. And then, I think we should have a discussion also, we're talking about looking at this beautiful little granny flat there, mother-in-law unit, and I think it's appropriate that they are one-bedroom, and, but once you start getting larger number of bedrooms in these, you're going to end up with a lot more cars out on the streets, so I think that's something that we should consider. I think in the urban areas, a one-bedroom is sufficient, and that's what I would look at. Just for reference, the City of Thousand Oaks, I know their staff recommended 600 square-foot accessory dwelling units. I think the Planning Commission recommended 700, and that might have been where they went, just to give you an idea of what other communities are looking at, so we really are broadening it when we go to the state maximum of 1,200.
I'm sorry, I won't be able to support the one-bedroom restriction. I, there's so many families that are just trying to get in, that that's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to do that.
And it depends what you're using these for, are you going to put another family on a lot in a residential area, or are you putting that aside for, you know, one or a couple, a couple to live or a person, so it's just, that to me is how you look at it.
Yeah, I think, I think the affordable housing crisis is very much for families out there, so I just, that's one. When you said Oak Park, when you were adding that, do you mean on the minimum?
Oak Park and Thousand Oaks going to the 10,000 lot, square-foot lot size.
Well, you said 10,000 for every place in the county.
No, you said 9,000, correct?
Oh, okay.
And I'm saying, you can have 9,000, and then you've made some exclusions.
So, we'll keep it the same, okay.
I would change it for just the Oak Park, Thousand Oaks area, go to the 10,000.
To add that to the motion.
So, keep it at 9,000 in the county, but in those two areas, go to 10, and the areas that we've talked about, go to 6.
Okay.
I can live with that.
That I can agree with.
Okay, all righty.
And the other thing is Supervisor Parks called out a number of places for fire mitigation to look at, but... to look at, but my understanding is, Fire Department's going to come back with all of those areas, whether we call them out here today or not. Is that correct?
I'm sure.
I think they were looking at it by area, and we say, yeah, those areas are definitely something to look at.
When we call the fire marshal?
But I think we also need to look at some roads specifically outside of that area.
Yeah, I'm, I just want to make sure that it's not limited only to that, if, that we don't go in that direction.
Good afternoon, Chairs Aragosa, members of the board, supervisors. For the record, this is, I'm Masood Aragi, Fire Marshal with the Fire District. Excuse me. My suggestion would be, rather than specifically naming areas, we set criterias.
Yeah.
That says, if you meet these criterias, then you are in the fire hazard impact areas. And those criterias will determine basically whether we are limiting or putting additional requirements on it or not. So, not necessarily specifically mentioning areas, because that could change, and some of the areas, part of the areas in the high hazard area, part of it is not, the state maps changes over the years. So, it'd be difficult to kind of go with naming areas as we go. That, that would be my suggestion.
And you have the criterias that they, they can use?
I have some of it, yes.
They can use?
And we can work with the staff and have more specifics.
So, are, I'm curious whether planning staff is comfortable and whether the supervisors are comfortable saying, explore, explore setting the fire hazard district up based on areas, right?
Based on some criteria.
Based on criteria, I'm sorry. Based, based on criteria. That's at least the start, and we, we see what you come back.
Lee Roy, are we okay with that?
The criteria that we were talking about was the width less than, road less than 20 feet, limited, limited, you know, access on the street, parking and so forth, and then potential high fire areas. I think planning put a couple of requirements or flags there that we can look at for it. But I agree with you, that I think that would be more important.
I think that's more specific, like access roads that are one way in, one way out.
Right.
The Carlisle Canyon, that would be the example. So, rather than specific, say, that area, it says if you have access one way, one, one way in, one way out, that would be one of the criterias that would.
Unless I hear something different, I would make that.
Are we okay with that?
Make that part of the, go ahead.
Excuse me, that we could say is, we'll, we'll help research this and get further guidance. I, I'm not quite sure it will work, because there's a distinction between standards, and this is standards, and, and zoning, so.
Okay.
I see how those two fit together.
So, we can work with it?
But we'll work with staff to see what's appropriate. If, if we can do it, then we.
So, direct, direct staff to work with the Fire Department on the issue of criteria and.
Standards.
County Council on issue of criteria and, and standards.
Right. Because we have brush clearing at Lockwood Valley. We have different ordinances for up there, not ordinances, policies, procedures that we have to do because they're a high fire area. We have them in the county.
Thank you, thank you.
I, I have one other, not with the fire, but you're forcing us to look at all our areas in our district and, and see which ones we need to really call out. And in this regard, the area of Somas, it has huge lots up on the hills, but in the town, you have, while the lots may be big, there's, the parking is ridiculous. If you've been in the town of Somas, that I think if you start, right now, 91%, they say of the lots could have these accessory dwelling units at 9,000. I'd like to, just for the town of Somas, not the hills, if we can also have that 10,000 applied to that also. So, I would ask to include that in the motion, too.
So, could you repeat those, those areas that you want the 10,000 at, just so?
It was Thousand Oaks, Oak Park, and now we're adding the town of Somas.
Somas, right, okay.
Okay, so, so we've got a motion.
Can you show us what you have so far written up? And I don't know how to.
Can I just record it, or? I might not have visibility because of the motion. If you start the motion, you have it in the motion.
And I guess you'll have to read it.
And record it?
Can you read?
Once you enter it, it should show on the screen, but if it's not.
It's already entered.
Yeah, it's entered, you probably don't have visibility.
Can you read it?
You should have to read it out verbally.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, the Ojai impact area is the same that's on your paper. Direct staff to proceed with analyzing the ramifications of relaxing the current standards in order to allow 1,200 square foot units, lots of one acre or larger, 9,000 square foot units on.
900.
900 square foot units on lots of, lots of 20,000 square feet or larger. The fire hazard areas, work with staff to set criterias for fire hazard areas and standards. That's all I have.
Sorry, read that again.
Work with staff to set criterias for fire hazard areas and standards.
All right, okay. Then all the rest.
Examine 6,000 square feet in Del Norte and El Rio. Maintain minimum lot sizes at 9,000, but look at 6,000 for East Ventura.
No.
No.
So, so, I think, I think the better way, so, so examine 6,000 square feet at El Norte.
El Rio, Del Norte.
El Rio, Del Norte, and the North, North Ventura Avenue area.
Okay.
And then maintain night, maintain the current 9,000 square foot minimum, except.
Oak Park, Thousand Oaks, and Somas at 10,000.
The city, the downtown Somas.
Town of Somas.
Yeah, the town of Somas.
Flat area.
Okay.
And also option one on the coastal zone.
And then direct, the D is, the, direct the staff to establish standards for the interior ADUs in the open space and the ag zones, particularly for the protection of water quality and traffic impact reports.
That's correct.
And E, direct staff to proceed with revising the coastal zoning ordinance per staff's option one.
Right, right.
Could you, the part about the open space and agriculture, what was that? How did it read?
Direct staff to establish standards for interior ADUs.
Oh, interior, okay. And then also, have we addressed the size of the, other than the 900 square feet, or you mentioned it, 1,200? What is the default size of the ADU in square feet? Have we addressed that? Are you going to 1,200? Are you going to 6, 7, 900?
Chair Aragosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers, our Supervisor Parks, are you referring to the Ojai traffic impact area specifically or across the board? Across the board, our current ordinance allows up to 1,200 square feet unless you're 40 acres or more, and then you can go up to 1,800.
And what was it before the state stepped in last year?
It was really the same.
It was 1,200 before? Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that changed was the square footage. We were opening it up a little bit more.
Okay, so we got a first and a second then, so that's, you know.
You were going to second that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Good collaboration, board.
Yes, good job, good job, by the way.
That was a lot.
Thank you. Please vote, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job putting this information together.
Yeah, it was good, it's a lot.
Lots of work.
Thank you. Oh, so now we're going into closed session, and are we going to have any announcements? Lee Roy?
No, we, we do not expect any announcements.
So, we'll adjourn from the closed session.